Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. First item on our agenda today is the subdivision of Calfold Farms, which has been postponed until our next meeting. So, item two on the agenda is Villas at Roanoke.
There was a deadline.
I know, but we have a letter. We have a letter.
Hello?
I thought your other client was gonna be on today.
Fadoon?
No? We're not ready?
I was gonna go out and see it.
I did, it looks good.
I didn't know that he was gonna be on, because I didn't know.
Well, it's not on, but I just thought it might've been. That's fine.
Yeah, we put it on next time.
I think we're ready, I spoke to Dick, I think we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jerry. Hi. Good, thank you. Yeah, try to.
How are you?
Everything's good, everything's well.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Good.
State your names?
Yeah, if you could, for the record.
Gerald.
Simone.
Jeffrey.
Charles Cuddy.
Thank you. So, the planning department has received and reviewed an application to approve a yield map, which is the first step in moving forward to a potential major subdivision. They're proposing the yield map on existing vacant wooded parcel of land located within the RA forty and RA eighty zoning use districts. The proposed major subdivision application is considered an unlisted action pursuant to secret. Coordinator review is optional and recommended for this particular action. Planning staff recommends that the planning board circulate a request to assume lead agency status for the purposes of secret review. The subject parcel is a eleven point one three acre parcel of vacant land, which is located on the south side of Sound Shore Road in Jamesport. The property is split zoned with the northern approximately four hundred and seventy-five feet located within the RA forty district. That's approximately four point four acres, and the balance of the parcel, which is approximately six point seven acres, is located within the RA eighty zoning district. The character of the surrounding area is predominantly residential and rural. The northern side of Sound Shore Road in the vicinity of the subject parcel is entirely residential. There are several single-family residences located across a private right-of-way to the east of the subject parcel. The land to the south is vacant and rural farmland, and the Suffolk County North Fork Preserve is located to the west of the subject parcel. It is noted that there is a small portion of a flag lot, which is between the subject parcel and the North Fork Preserve. The grade of the subject parcel is generally pitched downwards towards Sound Shore Road, with the road frontage having elevation of approximately forty to forty-four feet, and the southern portion or the rear portion of the property having approximate elevation of ninety to ninety-five feet. So, there is about a fifty-foot grade change over the course of the parcel.
You have coffee with the key map?
Uh, there is no key map on this, on this yield map, unfortunately.
This is probably.
Yeah, I know.
Right down.
Right over to the beach, okay.
Here.
Yep, got it.
So, the planning department has received the yield map, prepared and stamped by Howard Young Land Surveyor, last dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, as well as a yield map, which shows an increased yield with the application of transfer of development rights, which I will address further on the report. In terms of the standard yield requirements of the town code, the map has identified the following lot sizes within the RA forty zoning district. Lot one has forty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-five square feet. Lot two is forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five square feet, and lot six is seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven square feet, which includes sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one square feet of uplands and nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three square, nine thousand, three hundred and thirty square feet of wetlands. In the RA eighty zoning district, the lot sizes are ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three, and one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and forty-one square feet. Now, again, with that lot has about two hundred and forty-one square feet of wetlands deducted from the yield. The yield map has excluded the following areas from calculations, freshwater wetlands, and areas provided for the provision of public highways. Now, it is noted that pursuant to town code, areas that are required for stormwater recharge are to be deducted from the total yield calculations. Now, although there are no areas identified on the plan specifically for the recharge of stormwater, it's unclear whether they're proposing a separate drainage area, or if they propose to capture it in a stormwater management system within the right-of-way. It is noted that in each of the six lots that are being proposed, there is an excess of land contained within each of those lots, which could be reserved for a future stormwater recharge area as the plan moves forward when they get the actual SCET plan and cluster.
This wetland, this is the wetland, right?
Correct.
Does that extend onto the adjacent property?
It is not connected on our town wetland maps, it does not show them as connecting. Further identification of that area will be required as the plan moves forward, just as to the quality.
It's just that it's on the, you know, it's on the boundary.
Yeah. So, there is an excess of land in each of the lots. The total excess land in excess of what's required by the town code in the RA forty portion is approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet, and there is approximately forty-two thousand square feet of excess in the RA eighty zoning portion of the property. In total, the excess land is about eighty thousand square feet, which, as I said, as the application moves forward and they come up with an actual cluster plan, they could identify an area that could be identified for stormwater recharge. So, moving to the transfer of development rights yield map. Now, the six lot yield map, just showing the as-of-right subdivision, as I said, doesn't seem problematic too much when you can figure out where to do the recharge, but when you do a transfer of development rights, it, in effect, doubles the density of the subject parcel, so this shows twelve potential lots. I won't go through and read every lot size, but the average of these lot sizes is about thirty-six thousand square feet. The area on this map for the roadway needs to be calculated, just so we can verify the lot sizes to make sure everything complies. But being that the parcel is split zoned, it sort of makes an interpretation of this section of the code difficult. Within the RA forty zoning district, with the application of TDRs, it states that no lot size shall be smaller than twenty thousand square feet. And in the RA eighty zoning district, when the increased density is applied, it says no lot shall be smaller than forty thousand square feet. Now, because it's split zoned, you've got a portion where minimum, maximum, the minimum is twenty thousand with increased density, and the minimum is forty thousand. It sort of makes it difficult, because you've got split zoned, and the average is thirty-six thousand square feet. So, while they exceed the minimum in the RA forty zoning district, they do not, they're under the minimum in the RA eighty zoning district. But I believe for establishing the yield, you know, it's okay to have a discussion. Now, the stormwater management for the increased density yield.
How many credits?
Uh, they would be applying six credits. So, it would, as I said, it would, in effect, double it from a six lot subdivision to a twelve lot subdivision. The twelve lot yield map is more problematic when it comes to stormwater recharge. The lot sizes become significantly smaller, the road size becomes larger, so ultimately it leaves less area for stormwater recharge to be identified.
Can I just address that for a minute? Howard believes, and he's here, that the total area that's gonna be stormwater drainage required is less than eight acres. And generally speaking, when you have that, you don't end up with a drainage area. He's here. He means the basin, yeah, the basin. That's right.
So, meaning they would be able to manage the stormwater within, they would put rings in or some sort of system?
That's, that's what he says, yeah. That's a lot, but they, you've got a fifty-foot drop from south to north.
Well, it's really just a very upper portion, the rest of it is, is pre-levelered here.
Yeah, the, the southern port, the rear portion of the property does have the steepest grades.
It is just one.
They look, some areas, they look to be about twelve or thirteen percent.
Yeah.
Looked at, and looking at lot twelve, and that little triangle there is the, is the boundary for a, a house, where you have the nice sizes on the other.
Uh-huh.
A little bit, I can't see how this could be.
Uh-huh.
Especially looking at the grades, and you've got the wetlands, you gotta keep a hundred feet away, et cetera, et cetera. That lot is problematic.
Excuse me, Joe, with my idea that this is a yield map, and if this is approved, then we go ahead, we could do a cluster map on this, so there'll be a whole kind of, we could down to maybe twenty thousand or fifteen thousand, so we'll get under the cluster.
That's the concept.
Okay.
I mean, the twelve, without proving, without demonstrating that they can contain the stormwater, the twelve lot increased density does seem to be problematic. The six lot as-of-right subdivision doesn't, doesn't seem to be as problematic, but this one, you know, unless they can demonstrate where they're gonna store this, or how they're gonna store it, I think the twelve lot is a lot to try to put on this parcel. Yeah, just moving forward, so the town code requires a cluster subdivision within the RA eighty zoning use district. Now, while it's required in the RA eighty and not in the forty, there is nothing in the code which would prohibit clustering the entire subdivision. Staff would strongly recommend, based on the subject parcel and the steep grades, that the entirety of the proposed subdivision should be clustered in order to preserve some of these wooded areas.
How much of it is actually wooded, just the back portion?
The entire, the entire, the entire parcel is completely wooded. And it's actually very interesting, there was, as I was walking the subject parcel, about halfway up the parcel, the nature of the area changes. The front, you know, up by Sound Shore Road is deciduous vegetation, and there is like a very distinct line where it sort of crosses over into like an evergreen sort of forested area. So, I mean, there was a distinct line, I don't know if it was a result of previous clearing or something, but it's definitely not a natural feature, because it was a very distinct line, and it was like two different, almost like two different parcels. Again, that could just be a result of historical clearing or something.
Is it road?
Well, there is a, so this piece right here is actually a flag portion of this lot, which is, had, development rights have been sold on it, so that little flag portion, now, there's no road there, there's no development on it, but that does separate it from the North Fork Reserve.
Is the road gonna be dedicated to the town?
Uh, as per the town code, it would have to be designed in a manner where it could be dedicated to the town.
Service by Riverhead Water District?
Yes, Riverhead, water availability to the parcel would be problematic. Believe there was a private hydrant back here, but we're, we're not even at that point yet. This is just for discussion and yield purposes. The issue of water availability would be addressed as we move forward with cluster subdivision and going forward.
Is there any water on Sound Shore Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, the applicant must demonstrate how the application complies with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. They're proposing the maximum build, the maximum build-out of the lot. They could potentially get an increased density from the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, if there, if those increased densities were reserved for affordable housing. However, if they reduce the maximum development from, by one lot of the maximum development, they would not be subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. So, that's something the applicant's gonna have to demonstrate, is that how they can comply with the act, or if they're gonna reduce the yield.
Have you had any discussions with the county on this parcel?
Oh, we have, yes. They actually, they're, they're very interested in it, you know, they just wanted us to, we told them we wanted to go through the process, talk to you guys about it first, and see as far as our yield, and while we're entitled to, to be able to, you know, do the development. And I spoke to Mr. Krupski about it, and he'll be sat with the farm committee on it, and they'd love to have it, they said it would connect their parcel, you know, straight across, but they.
Which is their parcel? This one?
No, they're not, they're not.
The North Fork Reserve.
Yeah, this is the last piece of that kind of pie right there, but, but, you know, Al, just tell us to kind of go forward with what we wanna do, and once we get the yield, this yield map done, I'll bring them a yield map, and we'll do the best we can.
Yeah, okay.
But we're, we're willing to do that, to answer your question. But we had to go through this process first, because raw land, it's really worth not that much.
It sets the, it sets the bar.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
So, as I said, I mean, the, the six lot as-of-right subdivision yield doesn't seem to be much of an issue, but the application of TDRs, I think, needs a little more, a little more work on the part of the.
Sixty years, a lot of money. If it was clustered, then, I don't know if we wanna get involved in workforce housing, so it would be down to eleven, you made half acre lots, you're with the road, you're looking at maybe coverage of six acres, so how is that problematic for drainage, if you're leaving close to six acres?
You'd have to, when you submit a yield map, the drainage areas are supposed to be, you know, shown and identified and taken off at the top, which, as I said, because in these lots with the six lot, there's a lot of excess within the lots where they could still comply, if you remove that excess and locate it in a certain area, you know, determine when you start doing the cluster subdivision, but when you get smaller lots, a longer roadway, the area, you know, the ability for stormwater recharge is reduced.
What works with this, though, with that, is I do a lot of work up north, actually. So, with this pond right here, you can create little soap ponds for water collection, where it drains off, this is a natural, natural drainage, it's not something you don't gotta dig it out, it's already there, you don't gotta put in a soap pad, so, I mean, this actually really works well, because it all does flow there. So, you can put in all types of drainage pools off the houses, and just kind of segue to that, and the water will clean, go right into it, and it's, and it's natural, and this, this would be fed for the environment, so it wouldn't dry out in the summer, it'd have a little more water going direct to it, and it would be better for just the conservation part of it, you know, with the wetlands being attached instead of drying out, you know, the animal, whatever the case is, you know. But we do quite a bit of that up north, and it works well.
Did you look at the vegetation around the pond?
Yes, I did, I actually went up there with Mr. Flood, and I took a look at it.
It's pretty, it's tight, the woods go right up to it, it's, it's actually nice, it's real, it's beautiful piece of property.
No, because it, it doesn't make sense to do that, I just wondered, that's why I asked about the adjacent property.
Correct, yeah. There's a good-sized pond right in here.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah, real big, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, and this was not any sort of DEC-regulated wetland, it wasn't on any sort of DE.
They said it was a town-mapped wetland, right?
Yeah.
So, if you put the road in, though, in your theory, you'd kind of be cutting that in half, because you wouldn't be taking the water from this side and going into the, this natural.
Uh, you could do on the wa, on the road, storm drain, anything like that, you know, so the water just kind of flow naturally. That's what we normally do up north, it works well. DEP's big on that, they're like a tornado, and, you know, it's, it's the watershed for New York City, so they police it, they wanna, they, they believe in all that rainwater pools coming off the houses, you know, got out just little rain gutters, the water settles, overflows into a little swell, just kind of keeps mirandering down to one big pond, and then it overflows into a river, or whatever the case is, you know, because there's a lot of clay up there.
My recommendation, if, if they're gonna go forward with the twelve lot yield, just a little more demonstration of how they're gonna manage that stormwater would be required for.
Well, I think it's obvious that they're gonna go with that one, because that's where the value is for the county, so we should ask them to see it.
Okay.
Because that's what you're ultimately trying to get to.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct. And if we knocked it down to eleven?
We like to approach the county with twelve.
If I could make a comment for both my clients, that you would, after I read Greg's memo, I had one of my aides do a yield map to put the twenty thousand in that RA forty zone in, and we came up with a yield, allowed a yield of fourteen lots, not twelve.
I mean, I, I can't, I haven't seen a fourteen lot.
I can submit that.
No, he just did that. I really put you into affordable housing. Yeah, that's right.
I mean, ultimately, if we can do some accounting, we'd really like to.
You wanna get involved with the affordable housing? Is that something, I've never done that before.
No, but I, what it is, is we need.
In order to get to twelve, you gotta.
Approach the county.
If you're fourteen, you just want the.
I'm not saying going forward after we approach the county, if it didn't work the county, we'd probably reduce it, you know, to make.
We would not get greater than eleven.
Yeah, correct.
Affordable housing. They don't require that it be. You've got some nice houses.
Yeah, no, no, they, they, they wanna know that, you know, we're going forward, into the town, you know, you guys approved basically the yield of what we can get, and then they'll do their appraisal of that, knowing that lots are realistic, you know, handing them just a survey, they, they, they wanna see more of that, you know.
But now, when you go to the county, I mean, are they taking into account the fact that you're showing an increased development yield, as, you know, as a, I mean, there's a substantial investment that's already going into the increase, so.
Yeah, they could drop the cost of the TDRs from it.
Yeah, yeah. And we, you know, we did the same thing with Roanoke.
Roanoke and Sound Avenue, parcel was twenty-two acres.
Yeah, we were able to just kind of switch it over, it worked out well, you know.
So, just a legal question for Dick, if we accept the yield, the yield map at twelve lots, or if we come to an agreement, and the county doesn't purchase it, we bound by that going forward, if, if it goes through for development?
Well, they'd have to purchase the development rights to indicate, but I, I think Greg's point is that the actual yield map is the yield as of right. That the yield map that you're gonna accept, if you do, is gonna be the six lots, that's what you're entitled to as of right of parcel. Then there's a question of the engineering to add TDRs to that map, and how many TDRs can you add and still meet the other criteria? It's not really a yield map at that point, it's a development plan. So, my advice would be the yield map you accept is gonna be six, with an option for increased development through a TDR program, if they bring you an engineered map that shows they can engineer another six, whereas how we said, eight additional lots by purchasing eight more TDRs, and fit them with the twenty thousand square foot minimum, the forty thousand square foot minimum, the average, and the, all that, then that's, that's the next decision.
If you look back at the resolutions from Villas, I believe, if I remember correctly, and you would know how, I think, we did a twenty-three lot subdivision, with the, with the ability to transfer in another twenty-three, and that was written into the resolution. But the yield map was at twenty-three, and then you did another one with the yield map of the, of the forty-six. But the way it was written, it was written in the resolution.
Correct.
You could accept that.
You first establish the number you're entitled to as of right.
Correct.
We, we have to do that first, we have to decide how many are entitled to as of right. Then the, if you want a resolution that says, and you can have more on this site, that would be a subsequent resolution. But the chairman's question was, if we establish the yield that's permissible on this site at six, are we bound by the six? And my answer to you would be yes, unless there's something changed.
Okay. So, what's that happen?
Well, you could, this is the. Now, bring in a map to show if this would help. This is the one we want to go with. This would be the six lot. Now, that's a right.
But. You have, you have to consider how the town code's written, the town, the town code is written, what am I entitled to on this site without any transfer of development? That's, that, you have to know that, because you, you can't add development to it unless you know what you're entitled to.
Yeah, but the boundary line of, of RA eighty and RA forty, and the increase of area of development rights, is town code that would absorb that density.
Sure, and then you can get another resolution that says that answer.
Sequence.
But you first have to know, I, I think Mr. Burksman's saying that the six is an acceptable map. How are we saying he's gonna bring in?
No, I didn't, I just said.
He has, he has an option, he has one in his pocket that might show a different yield.
Well, we have it right here.
No, it's not, not a different yield on the six lot, it's different, because Greg wants to see, and rightfully so, that we can get X number of lots within the forty thousand square foot zone, and because it's split zone, it's more complicated than the twenty-three, and I think in the past, we've just taken, we're allowed under the code to do six lots, so double it, we got twelve, and that's what we did here, we didn't go into the different zones. When I go into the different zones, I can push this up to fourteen, I'd have to show X number of lots in that forty thousand zone, and X number, and so that's the only difference. And my understanding would be if the, if the town did approve this yield with, with the additional development rights, then after they approve that, we'll go do a cluster subdivision.
Yes.
And we'd still have to decide how many lots we want to do.
Okay. So, the general consensus, moving forward, the sixth, the board is okay with the six lot subdivision, we'd address the increased yield.
Okay, we'll come back with that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Hey, guys.
Good day.
The next item on the agenda is number three, Breezy Hill Group, seventeen ninety-two Middle Road.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Oh, if you could just state your names for the record, please.
Tom Gippins, Nelson and Pope Engineering.
Chick Voorhees, Nelson and Pope and Voorhees.
Stephen Lo Squadro, attorney for the applicant. Good afternoon.
All right, so, the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application seeking to establish and operate a C and D facility pursuant to New York State DEC regulations, part three sixty and three sixty-one, on a piece of industrially zoned land in Calverton. To date, the applicant has performed a significant amount of work illegally, without any permits from any town departments or any outside agencies, this included, clearing of existing vegetation, and beginning operations of the proposed use on the site. There were multiple stop work orders posted on the property, the applicant had worked through some of those stop work orders. There has been one notice of viol, one issue in February where people were noted on the site, doing work, operating machinery, again, with these stop work orders still in place. The proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. seeking to establish and operate a C and D facility pursuant to New York State DEC regulations part three sixty and three sixty-one on a piece of industrially zoned land in Calverton. To date, the applicant has performed a significant amount of work illegally without any permits from any town departments or any outside agencies, this included clearing of existing vegetation and beginning operations of the proposed use on the site. There were multiple stop work orders posted on the property, the applicant had worked through some of those stop work orders. There has been one notice of viol, one issue in February where people were noted on the site doing work, operating machinery, again with these stop work orders still in place. The proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. By resolution number eighteen dash twenty-two, the planning board circulated a request to involve agencies requesting that the planning board assume lead agency status for SECR review. To date, the planning department has not received any comments objecting to the planning board assuming lead agency status.
Greg, just a question, is, is the stop work order still in place right now?
Yes.
Is there any work going on?
There is not. And, and in fact, just, just, you know, for purposes of clarity, there, there was work that took place and that was primarily two years ago. And that was primarily done at the time when the applicant was interacting with the DEC with respect to material that was coming from a yard that they had in Westbury, so it was not hidden from the DEC. Having said all that, the reference that Greg made to what happened in February was actually made known to the town attorney's office before it happened. Eric Howard was notified and that was pursuant to removing materials as per a DEC consent order, so there's nothing that's happened on the site for quite some time.
Which, you had material brought in and you had removed it.
Correct.
Can, can you, because I, this office has not seen those orders of consent from the DEC, can you get us copies of that?
Yes, I know they've been given to Bob and to, and to Eric for, for quite some time, but I'll make sure that you get copies.
Sure. With regards to SECR recommendations, now that the coordination period has ended, the planning board can assume lead agency status and staff is gonna recommend a positive declaration to issue for this application. Staff has identified the following significant potential environmental impacts, potential impacts to groundwater and local water resources, noise pollution, dust impacts, traffic impacts, roadway infrastructure, removal of agricultural soils, stormwater management and drainage, removal of existing vegetation and required screening with residential properties.
What's the zoning on the parcel?
Zoning is industrial A. So the, as I said, it's industrial A, it's a six point six eight acre parcel which is located at seventeen ninety-two Middle Road. The property has frontages on both Middle Road and Manor Road. The parcel is presently improved with a two-story frame and stucco structure, which is a single, which was used as a single family residence, as well as a thirteen hundred square foot frame barn or garage, as well as an in-ground swimming pool.
Or is this the whole?
No, this, this is the parcel. Yep, these are, these are single family residential uses.
And this?
That, that's a, that's a residential lot.
That goes through?
Yes, all, all of these lots have frontage on both Middle and Manor. The surrounding area is predominantly industrial uses with Suffolk cement products occupying a large area to the south and west of the subject parcel. However, there are several residential properties located to the northeast of the subject parcel, as well as to the southeast across Middle Road. During a site visit conducted by planning staff, the land clearing and illegal work was evident throughout the property. On pages three and four of the staff report, you can see some images of the conditions of the property. That site visit was done mid-February. So in figures two through six, you can see evidence of the clearing that was done, including stockpiles of cleared vegetation. There's also material piles on site which were unidentified. The disposal of potentially contaminated materials at the site, as well as the fact that it was brought to the site with what appears to be no regulation or monitoring, raises concerns as to the contents of these piles. Staff recommends that these piles be subjected to sampling and environmental testing through the SECR review process.
Yeah, Greg, I, I'd like to just interrupt. We did do testing, we will provide that material as well and they did not exceed any guidance values that would be of concern.
When was the testing done?
Last fall.
This is all done pursuant, as I referenced earlier.
Based on DEC.
Done pursuant to the DEC consent order, so all the materials have been vetted.
So we have a site characterization report that was submitted to DEC from September twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. And we'll make this available and obviously the environmental impact statement will address all of this.
With regards to groundwater, it's noted that public water is not available in the vicinity of the subject parcel. All the residential uses in the immediate area use wells which may be subject to groundwater contamination if the proposed use of the parcel is not regulated properly.
That's the groundwater.
Let me check the AF Joe, I don't have that off the top of my head. It's around fifty foot elevation, fifty to fifty seven feet of elevation.
That's land elevation?
Yeah. I'll get that for you just.
So staff would recommend groundwater sampling be conducted to establish a baseline of the existing groundwater conditions, chemical content, and should also identify the direction of groundwater flow. With regards to the landscaping buffers that are required pursuant to town code, town code states that the minimum required non-disturbed transitional side and rear yards shall be fifty feet, however, when buildings are less than five thousand square feet in size, the required side and rear transition yards shall be twenty-five feet adjacent to a residential district. Based on the clearing, it does not appear that these required buffers are still in place. On page seven of the staff report, you can see some of the images which are taken during that site visit which show the proximity to the neighboring parcel. As you can see in figure number eleven, the image with all the trucks, there's virtually no existing buffer now between that residential property and the site of the proposed use.
That residential use for that building gets up to the area. Being too close to a, to a property.
That building did receive permits and it did receive.
Greg, what is the difference in time from March of two thousand and eighteen to now? First time this is coming out of?
Yeah, there, there was a, there was a shortfalling on our end, the secret coordination letter was not sent out unfortunately. I did speak to the applicant, they provided us with the necessary copies to make those referrals. That referral was made and now the secret coordination period is over. We've received all, you know, we've received all comments back, but that's the explanation for that lapse in time. Now with regards to required buffers, the site plan does appear to indicate that a significant amount of the remaining vegetation will be cleared on the front of the property along its frontage with Middle Road. Clearing in this area is being proposed in order to create drainage recharge areas. One of the questions for the applicant's design professional is whether or not alternative drainage systems could be designed to meet the drainage requirements of the site without losing some of the extent, the extensive vegetation that's present on the site which would just help to screen the proposed use. In terms of traffic impacts, in page eight of the staff report, you'll see that the applicant has cleared trees and created a curb cut on Manor Road. Did not see permits from Town Highway Department on this curb cut. And the site plan does propose curb cuts on both Manor and Middle. Planning staff recommends that the applicant eliminate the curb cut on Middle Road and utilize a, you know, get a permit for and utilize the curb cut on Manor Road. This is recommended in order to prevent additional truck traffic from driving around Manor down Middle past the single family residences. You know, if they're coming off of Manor, it'll just reduce the disturbance to those neighboring residences. Traffic impact statement prepared by a licensed professional engineer is recommended. Through the SECR process, the applicant must identify the number of truck trips that will be generated as a result of the proposed use and identify the types of trucks, weights of the vehicles that will be utilized in the town roadways in order to fully analyze the potential impacts. With regards to noise, the proposed siting of a C and D recycling facility presents the potential for a significant noise impact for the surrounding residential uses. The applicant must present to planning board with appropriate noise mitigation controls. As part of that, noise study will be recommended. They will need to identify the types of equipment used in operation of their business, the number of machines, the types of sound levels that would come for the proposed use, as well as assess the increase in noise disturbance from the increased truck traffic.
Do that trucks have R permits? Or heavy weight, you do have twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Uh, no, the ten wheelers are seventy-four thousand.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Great question.
Yes.
This building, this, is this, this building is not part of the?
No, that, that building is located on the residential lot to the east.
That's on the residential lot?
Correct. With regards to the sound levels on the property, as the application moves forward, the planning board may wish to consider covenants which limit the hours of operation because there are residential uses in the vicinity. In terms of outdoor storage pursuant to the town code, outdoor storage within the industrial A zoning district is limited to thirty percent of the parcel area or two acres, whichever is less, and it must be suitably screened pursuant to the town code. The site plan does propose lock, propose large areas for stockpiling materials, however, there's no calculations provided regarding the size of this area. Plans must be revised to identify the amount of storage and must demonstrate compliance with the thirty percent outdoor storage limits of the code. With regards to the use, the applicant did go to the zoning board of appeals, they went through the zoning board of appeals twice. They went first time in April of two thousand and eighteen. At that point, they went for an interpretation, the ZBA determined that the town code does not prohibit concrete crushing as a use. The applicant then went back for clarification in September of two thousand and eighteen and the ZBA found that concrete crushing as previously determined and that the processing of concrete, asphalt and earth would likewise not be prohibited as part of the concrete crushing use. But they did find that processing, storage and or transfer of garbage, including wood, metals and plastics or recyclables would be prohibited on the subject parcel.
And, and.
Does your phrase not be permitted, prohibited being permitted?
The stor, yeah, so the stor, the processing, storage or transfer.
Or the ZBA.
That's, that's, that's directly from the ZBA.
Not be prohibited, be permitted.
Yes, and, and to be clear, what, what happened was, it was a matter that Brad Hammond had wanted to be brought forward, so there would be an interpretation. And there was, and then working with Brad and, and then also with Jeff as well, who was very helpful in the process, we had that clarified because the applicant affirmatively agreed that the interpretation should be clarified to exclude garbage or anything of the sort, so that would be crystal clear coming forward out of the, the ZBA interpretation.
There is a water feature on the subject parcel which is shown on page three of the site plan, however, no details are given as to the nature of the pond, if it was a manmade feature.
It is.
Yeah, just it, the, the water feature will need just further assessment and clarification on the site plan to determine the importance.
Do you have site plans?
Yes, I do. The site plan was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission and they considered it to be a matter for local determination. It, it will be referred to the DOT through the SECR referral process just due to its proximity to the state Route twenty-five, the Long Island Expressway. The word, the application would require the preparation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan and it must address all the clearing that's already taken place on the property. The next steps for the application, if the planning board concurs with the recommendation for a positive declaration, the application will move forward to the scoping phase of the SECR process prior to the preparation of a DEIS or an EIS. Where will the material being processed be trucked in from?
Primarily as follows, the, the applicant is affiliated with roadwork ahead and so, which is a, a, a union road construction contractor. So the material, first of all, will only come from sites on Long Island. And parenthetically, I should let you know that that was already established by way of the consent decree with the DEC when they came in and they verified where the material that was there had come from previously. The, the contractor only works on Long Island and it's primarily going to be concrete, which is why the, the ZBA interpretation and the grant speaks to a concrete crushing facility. So curbs that are torn up as part of roadwork or road renovation, that would be brought back and it would be crushed where it's created into a product and then it's, it's taken away.
Are there any monitoring wells on the property right now?
None that I'm aware of, no.
So the, the house there has a private well?
Yes. Yes.
All right, well, I, I definitely am in favor of positive declaration, just by the nature of the application and the activity and what's proposed and close to residential houses and I just, I think we need to do that.
Those residential houses, are they also in, in the industrial zone?
Yes, yeah, they are pre, they, they are pre-existing, but that whole area is in industrial A.
What's the activity that seems to be going on? I mean, this is an aerial shop, but that's an awful large building for, for residents and, and if you look at the adjoining property that's next to that, there, there seems to be a lot of cars, or trucks, I mean, they, they, they may even be trucks, I mean, is there, is there another commercial venture in that area?
There's no record.
You see what I'm, what I'm referring to, you know, I mean, that's, that's a huge building, you know, on somebody's property.
Yeah, I mean, to my knowledge, there's no permitted commercial activities on those two properties, but I can, I can research that further and get you some information on that.
And the, the rock crusher, I'm pretty familiar with those, I've been in the wellings plant business for thirty-five years. That can get noisy, you know, that can get pretty noisy, how those neighbors are gonna feel about it, but I mean, I would think that if it's, if it was put back towards as, as far back as, as close to Suffolk, you know, I'm sure they do the same thing, they have a concrete crushing issue.
Well, I was, I was informed by a representative of the applicant that I think in addition to Suffolk, I think immediately next door or immediately adjacent, there's someone who crushes as well. I, I can't speak because I'm not familiar with what may be permitted or not, but I know that, I've actually seen that myself too, so the one thing I do know is that from frequent visits there, and I've had to make frequent visits in order to facilitate what was done with the DEC so that the DEC could be satisfied in order to enter into the consent decree and as Mr. Voorhees said, obviously we'll make all that material available to, to Greg, it's already been provided to the town attorney. But having said all that, one thing I have noticed consistently is that there's very intense uses all surrounding this parcel. So I mean, it's just sort of an industrial pocket and anytime that you go there during business hours, there seem to be a variety of intense uses going on.
And the staff report requests a noise study as part of the environmental impact statement, so we'll collect ambient sound level information from the area, document the existing uses, the character of noise in the area and have that as part of the assessment.
Yeah, yeah.
Roadwork, are they, where are they based out of it, are they, the?
Westbury.
Yes.
So if the planning board agrees, Mr. Chairman, the next step would be first the applicant to prepare a draft scope.
Yes, correct.
And then bring that back to you to see if everything is included and if not, then pursuant to SECR with the new regs, you have to hold a SECR scoping session for the public to provide input. It's, it's, it's not a public hearing per se, they tend to look like one, but you have to provide the public an opportunity to provide input into the contents of the scoping documents.
Property has to be posted to that effect?
No.
No, not required.
And I know Chick's already preparing to, to embark on that.
And the staff report provides good guidance on the second page with the list of issues that were identified, the ten items, so we'll be following that very closely.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah. The next item, Calverton Pods Minor Subdivision. All right, so what we have before us now...
What's your name for the record, please? Gary Krupnik. Thank you.
Don't give up.
So, what we have before you is a...
Now you do the middle.
Yep, an application for a four-lot minor industrial subdivision, which was distributed on behalf of Calverton Distribution. The application proposes to subdivide an existing thirty-two point one acre parcel, create four lots, the lots would have sizes of six point nine three acres, six point four two acres, six point five two acres, and twelve point two five acres. All of the lots in the proposed subdivision comply with the zoning regulations of the industrial A zoning district. In terms of what the applicant has submitted, they have submitted three sketch plans, now one plan shows a four-lot subdivision, one plan shows a five-lot, and one plan shows a six-lot subdivision. While the applicant desires to move forward with the four-lot application, the additional sketch plans are required pursuant to the town code.
What the town code say?
The town code says that the applicant for a subdivision must, must be, must submit three alternative sketch plans. Again, based, based on the layout of the site, you know, the sketch plans, it's not really, there doesn't really appear to be much room to move the road, and the way the parcel is laid out, it just seemed, you know, for exercise purposes, the best way to do it was submit the four, five, and six lot plans. Now, it is noted that the plan that was submitted is prepared by a professional engineer. I've spoken with planning council, and prior to the application moving forward for any public hearings or any sort of approvals, we'll need the plan prepared by a New York State Licensed Surveyor. That will be required when they go forward to move, you know, apply for, you know, for, file it with the Suffolk County Clerk, but, you know, before we need it, before we move forward for public hearings, we'll need this plan to be prepared by a surveyor.
So, lot one shown on figure one is where the pods are now, right?
It's, it's six point three, it runs from the rear property line up to the road.
But yes, that is, that is where the pod warehouse is in lot one.
This is the pods that you're looking at.
Yeah, so, lot number one of the proposed subdivision is presently approved with a forty, roughly forty-five thousand square foot warehouse building and related site improvements, which was approved by the planning board in May of two thousand seventeen, and the southernmost portion of the property, the proposed twelve point two acre site, lot number four, is presently approved with a commercial solar farm. That was approved by the Riverhead Planning Board in August of two thousand fourteen. In terms of SECRE review for this application, the application is considered an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. Coordinator review is optional and recommended among involved agencies. Planning staff recommends that the planning board circulate a request for lead agency status, and the following issues must be looked at under a SECRE review. Traffic impacts on Middle Country Road, especially at the Edwards Avenue intersection, impacts generated by additional proposed development within the general vicinity, and safety impacts to the school's ingress and egress, ecological impacts, potential loss of vegetation and wildlife habits, including potential impacts to the long-eared northern bat, the overall land use, discussion on the maximum land use and permitted uses that may potentially utilize the site, including expansion of the solar facility, community character, potential noise and use impacts on the neighboring charter school and its recreational use of its rear yard, which abuts the proposed subdivision, as well as infrastructure and utilities, the additional impacts to groundwater from wastewater disposal, demands for water supply and power. A comprehensive staff review of the application, comments from the planning board, and comments from involved agencies and the public may provide lead agency with additional information regarding potential concerns.
When did you come up with the long-eared bat?
Um, it, that, that was a comment, Jeffrey Seaman had reviewed this prior to him leaving, and that was a comment in one of his reports, so I'm carrying that forward, I mean, it could be not...
Gotta watch out for them.
It, it may or may not be, it, it may or may not be a habitat, but that's something that needs to be investigated and confirmed.
Rabbits.
In terms of conformity with zoning, all of the four proposed lots comply with the dimensional requirements of the industrial A zoning district with regards to lot size, lot width at the street frontage, as well as demonstrates proposed building envelopes which comply with zoning. It is noted, however, that the front yard setback on lots two, three, and four is shown as being a hundred feet from the existing property boundary. For the purposes of the subdivision, that hundred-foot setback should be ascribed from the proposed easement boundary, which would become the new front yard if the road were ever dedicated to the town highway. Now, in terms of access and the easement, the subdivision plan shows a sixty-foot wide, wide proposed access easement which would serve all the subdivided parcels. The roadway would be located along the eastern side of the property, whose current property line is shared with a horse farm to the east. The applicant must provide a copy of the proposed e- access easement agreement, as well as a maintenance agreement, which dictates how, who, and how the roadway will be maintained. In terms of the road construction, the access road must be designed and considered to be a standard collector road pursuant to the road and drainage standards for the town of Riverhead. The roads shall be of adequate width, as may be designated by the planning board. The standards for collector roads are a minimum fifty-five foot wide right-of-way, which the plan complies with, and a minimum thirty-seven foot wide road surface. The plan does not comply with this requirement, it appears to only show a twenty-four foot wide roadway. Now, it's recommended that the roadway be fully constructed prior to the issuance of any building permits on lots two and three if the subdivision is approved. With regards to road ownership, although the roadway must be designed to town specifications, that would make the roadway, roadway suitable for dedication to the town, the dedication of the roadway does seem to be problematic. On page four of my staff report, you can see an existing equipment pad in the northeast corner of the property, right on the frontage with Middle Country Road. This equipment pad serves the solar generation facility at the southern end of the property. Dedication of this roadway to the town would mean that this equipment pad would be located within the public right-of-way, which would not be recommended, and it's also noted that the access to the parcel, the curb cut off of Middle Country Road is only thirty feet wide, which does not comply with the thirty-seven foot wide road requirement. It's noted that the entrance was constructed as part of the site plan approval for the pod site prior to the subdivision application being considered by the board. There's also, as the road comes off of Middle Country Road and passes the Calverton Pods Building, there's a slight jog in the roadway, which would be, you know, based on the potential traffic on the site, is another reason why I think it would be unsuitable for dedication to the town.
It, it was never designed for dedication. It was, it was always gonna be a private room for a small subdivision, matter of fact, we went through originally the town, so they wanted no part of it.
In terms of screening, being that the application is proposing the access roadway along the eastern property boundary in close proximity to the neighboring property, the planning board should determine whether a row of vegetation along that eastern property boundary is appropriate in order to provide a measure of screening between the proposed industrial uses and the horse farm used to the east. The application does propose a turnaround at the southern terminus of the proposed lot three. Now, it's noted that a portion of the proposed turnaround is not contained within the dis-easement area, although, however, the turnaround at the current moment is only being proposed to comply with fire codes. At the time that the lot three is ever developed, that turnaround could be eliminated, and emergency vehicle access could be utilized through whatever development happens on lot three, so I'm not sure whether that turnaround would really need to be captured within that area. Now, the applicant has submitted a traffic analysis report and a trip generation study. This was actually looked at by the planning board when we reviewed the site plan application for the pods building. The traffic report analyzed the maximum potential trip generation as a result of the development of lots one, two, and three. It is noted that the report did not analyze any potential development from lot number four, which would be the solar farm. In order to avoid a segmented SECRE review, as well as to fully understand the potential traffic impacts, the traffic analysis report should be updated to include the potential development from the solar farm at the time when that is decommissioned, so that the board can properly account for the full potential build-out of the site and analyze its impact on the Middle Country Road Edwards Avenue intersection.
So, when that last traffic study was done, the school bus garage wasn't there either, right?
Correct.
And I don't think we had approved the bowl of subdivision either, right?
That, I'm not sure about the timing of the bowl of subdivision.
That was going through when we were doing this, so that was approved, I believe, as a public hearing, so...
Yeah, so we would just recommend that the traffic study be updated, again, to incorporate any development in the neighboring area, as well as account for potential development of the solar farm when it is decommissioned. It's noted that the proposed subdivision plan does not show any areas which are reserved for drainage or stormwater recharge. The plan does identify three existing leaching pools in the northern portion of the roadway near the pods building, as well as seven leaching pools further south along the roadway. The plan...
Question.
Yeah.
You don't have to solve this jog in the road, is it, is it possible to move this?
Well, the, the problem with it is, is that the intake for, for the electric is right there, and that was dictated way back before we ever got involved. This is on a twenty-year ground lease, twenty, twenty-five year ground lease, it's not going anywhere's, or anywhere's in this lifetime, so, there's no expectation.
But it's not possible to move that?
No, no, they want it right on top of where they take it in, they want it where they had access, so, that was like where it was at the time, so, we don't like it there either. This board had us rejuvenate all of the plantings there, we did, and we're feeding it with water, well-fed, off of the pods building, as requested by the chairman.
Pursuant to town code, if the subdivision is approved, there is a cash impact fee on existing streets and roads pursuant to town code section three oh one, two ninety-one, B sixteen. That cash impact fee is a rate of two thousand dollars per lot for an industrial subdivision. Based on the subdivision plan, if approved, an impact fee of eight thousand dollars would be required prior to the signature of the MYLR. In terms of open space in the proposed subdivision, pursuant to town code, the planning board may require that land be reserved for open space and/or recreational purposes. The ratio at which open space is to be preserved is one acre per fifty acres of a subdivision or proportional thereto, but in no case shall it be less than one acre. Now, it's noted that the southern portion of the property of the proposed lot one, which is behind the existing pods warehouse, presently undeveloped and in a natural state, the planning board may wish to find that this area is appropriate to be kept natural and considered open space within the proposed subdivision, so I don't know if the applicant would be willing to, you know, put a covenant on that property that it should be open space?
No, the applicant right now is well into a proposed user which will generate about a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand square foot of industrial manufacturing facility we're dealing with at town of Riverhead.
Now, is...
IDA as well, so...
Is that on lot one, or is that on proposed lots? Because that's something we'll, we'll need to look at.
It'll be part of this as well, so, and this was always, originally, this was supposed to be, to be able to expand this, but what's happened since then is we have a manufacturing facility that wants to come in here, which will generate quite a few jobs at the right level, and...
Take you two lots of this one?
Well, what'll happen is that we're gonna take the back end of this and merge it with, with this, once this is approved, and this'll go forward almost immediately, once it's, once it's all, we've already been to that.
So, why do I have a property line, why did this move?
Uh, it, for, because this, this is one lot now, and it holds it to the minor subdivision by keeping it this way, and then we'll just, you know, incorporate it with whatever is necessary out of this activity, so...
Well, it, it seems like these plans would need to be brought forward during this review, if we're not analyzing that, I mean, that's akin to a segmenting or review, so, I mean, if there's plans to develop this stuff, that needs to be brought forward, I believe, at this time, so we'd really come up with it.
We've been to the health department already, so we know what we have to do on that end of it already, so it's not, it's a matter of getting this approved as a minor subdivision. That was the original agreement with the town of Riverhead, was that they gave us a permit based on a land lease on this, so there wouldn't have to be a subdivision at that point in time, so that could go forward without a loss of these jobs and this opportunity, and we would come back and file minor subdivision, this was off in the sunset, twenty-five, whatever years down the road, that was a consideration, this was here before we got here, and this was always intended to be private, so, matter of fact, we were told by the town, we didn't, weren't interested in taking it.
You're gonna take this and this and merge it, is that...
Yeah, a piece of it, depends on, you know, depends on what we want.
The back part of your open space here and then this together?
Yeah, this was never intended to be open, this was, was supposed to be for expansion of the pods building. Pods has subsequently taken a piece of ground in East, town of East Hampton, I have a forty-five thousand square foot duplicate of this going up right now as we speak in the town of East Hampton.
So, with that facility, pods now, aren't you in exceedance of the storage of the containers now?
No, no.
How, they're stacked pretty high, I thought...
Three.
Three?
Yeah, and the equipment won't go any more than three. They're under the eve of the building, well, under the eve of the building, the eve, the eve of the building is, the building's thirty-five feet, so it's thirty-one foot to the eve, and three times eight is twenty-four.
What were the restrictions on that, Greg?
So, I had, I had looked at, when I did a, a final site inspection for the pod site, I did notice there were pods units right up against the building, as well as along the southern curb line.
Right.
I had spoken with the applicant, the last time I drove out there, all those pods were moved off of that curb line, pushed back against the building.
And subsequent to that, what's happened is, or happening is, is there'll be a, a two-foot wide yellow picture frame box painted onto the asphalt, which is what we're doing all over the country now, so that anybody from a code enforcement standpoint could come in right away and see that it's in conformance. There was some sloppy housekeeping initially when they first moved in, and I think this board or somebody at the, you might have driven by, said something, got a call, and by the end of the week it was corrected. What happens is when the trucks come in, they fully circulate on the site, the same thing will happen with the hundred behind it, it'll fully circulate within its own lot, so it'll go in and out, and it'll continue to use, these, these drivers will be connected when the other building goes in, so they'll come in, they'll do what they have to do, and they'll go back out straight, they're not gonna drive the whole property or anything like that. The, what happens is when the trucks come in, they, they offload the customer goods, and then until a forklift picks them up and brings them into the building, because that's what's, they're stored inside the building, not the empties, these are all empties outside. So, sometimes you'll see a couple of them laying here before the end of the day, business day, they're in the building.
So, you're gonna use the back portion of that, where would the open space be?
Um, the, this conforms now to the landscape piece of it, and I think what I just heard was we're below the threshold anyway to have to dedicate a lot.
Well, no, it, the, what it is, the ratio at which open space is preserved is one acre per fifty acres of a subdivision, but in no case, shall, in no case shall it be less than one acre, so, I mean, you're doing a, you would technically, by the code, you would need to preserve one acre of open space, because you're less than the fifty, so, it, but in no cases shall the reserved area be less than one acre. But, I mean, it just, in just speaking and some of the things that I've heard now, if there's, if there's consideration to change lot lines and merge lot lines and potential development, that's something we would need to analyze.
It's just under conversation, there's nothing inked or anything, so, we're just, we've done the research to it, and that, what we're doing now conforms to what the agreements were with the town, so we're not, we're not gonna create additional lots beyond this, so...
I mean, I, I'd recommend that any, even if there are conversations, I think the board should be, you know, informed of them, just so that we can, you know, we, we don't wanna get into a segmented SECRE review, I mean, that can just do nothing but tie up potential projects, so, I mean, I think any potential use of the property should be presented to the planning board so that they can contemplate it.
Balance of the, of the, of the use of the property is intended to be a hundred percent industrial, that's, that's, that's what's there, that's what's, that's the best use that...
What about lot three?
The argument...
Lot three, any proposed tenants?
One, three.
Of lot three, yeah.
Here?
No, no. Pods building, lot two, lot three.
No, no.
So, I think I was on the, the drainage, there are existing rings, they just need to provide calculations reviewed by the town engineer to determine whether or not the existing stormwater management system is appropriately sized for the proposed development. The application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and they considered the final plot to be a matter for local determination. They didn't include... They did include the comment that the proposed access easement should be replaced with a right of way in accordance with town highway specifications, and is suitable for future dedication. Based on the issues present at the site, as I said, I don't think the road would ever be appropriate for dedication to the town. Now, we get to the Riverhead Water District comments. The proposed subdivision was sent to H two M Architects and Engineers. They responded to a request for water availability to service the aforementioned subdivision. They had a number of comments, which I'll go through. First one is that during the pumping season, the Water District is taxed to meet peak water demands and are constantly looking for opportunities to develop new source and storage facilities. As this property is located near to both of the district's pressure zones, the district is requesting the dedication of a contiguous two acre parcel for the purposes of the district constructing additional water supply facilities. I mean, that, that's something I think the applicant needs to address with the planning board, I mean, I think the, asking for a dedication of two acres does seem like it's a bit of a lift on behalf of the Water District. I don't know how to really reconcile that.
It's pretty funny.
You know, it was a question if the, if the subdivision could be reconfigured, not that there's gonna be a dedication of two acres, but if the district wanted to purchase two acres, I think that may be appropriate. But I think asking for a two acre dedication is a little, little reaching. In terms of the water main, there'll be a new water main connecting to an existing twelve inch water main on Middle Country Road, which shall be extended along the proposed entry road to the subdivision. Services for the, for the proposed building and hydrants on the lots shall connect to this main. Any new water main owned by the district shall be located in a separate fifteen foot water easement dedicated to the Riverhead Water District. Combined utility easements will not be permitted.
That's already in. We jacked the road ready, and the full diameter of the existing water lane, which we brought in and extended to the east end of the property, was, the full diameter of that has been jacked to this side. There's a multi meter box in here, first piece was taken off into the Pods, and then each one will continue down that easement into the next lots.
But it's not a combined easement?
No, it was set up to the, to the specifications that Greg just mentioned, so. And there's one, there's one big precast that was put in at the time, so that each one would have its own meter setup and its own valving up front. Because there's independent lines that went back to each lot, as, as, as he's describing. That's the, that's what's required and proposed.
And the final comment from H two M, it provided the following general comments in order to help reduce stress on the Water District. That the applicant shall create landscaped, landscaped areas which require minimal irrigation, and implement water conservation methods throughout the subdivision, including but not limited, limited to the use of low flow or low volume fixtures. Staff would recommend that if the subdivision is approved, the covenant should be filed on each parcel, which states that the irrigation, the land, any landscaping will be provided via wells as opposed to public water, which is what we did on the front of the property. And it's also a good time to, you know, we, I, I know the planning board has spoke about, you know, low water usage for vegetation and screening. There's going around, it's called ziriscaping, it's similar to what you'd see in like a Arizona, more of a desert environment, the use of rocks and vegetation which is less water dependent. So the applicant, the application.
Not cheaper.
So the application was.
Well, the one it probably would be.
Yeah, because you, you do have maintenance, because the rocks don't, they don't stay stabilized, they, we just convert, are in the process of completing a quarter man square feet in Boulder County. Nobody's worse than Boulder County than I've found so far around the country, and the landscape though was forty thousand dollars, and probably sixty, sixty to sixty-five percent of it was rock scape. As Greg's describing, it's very common.
Yeah, no maintenance, or very little maintenance.
Once you put it in, it's, yeah.
No, no nitrogen load, it's got a lot of benefits.
Nonsense. But you do have to maintain it, it doesn't go away, especially in a heavy, in any kind of heavy snow area, because they wanna throw in the snow on top of it, and make a mess out of the rocks, and.
Well, the ground out there is, is horrible anyway, so.
Yeah, a lot of clay.
Yep.
So I'm not sure I'm reading this Water District requirement the same way you are.
Okay.
It seems to me that they want this water main extended all the way down here in a fifteen foot easement, and then each service taken off and connected to it, and it dedicated to them.
It was initially set up that we had to put an oversized precast meter box in here, so that every time another use was picked off, they could have a shutdown at that point, and I guess a meter or whatever at that point, and then that runs to each one individually. That was our understanding of it.
I, I.
We're happy to run one line, but they, they refused it to begin with, you know.
I, I don't know if their comments changed from when the Pods building was being constructed, but yes, I, I agree with the chairman that, you know, they're saying a new water main connecting.
We'd be happy to do it that way.
Sounds like they're proposing one main, and each year steps up.
That's not what they had it set up for, so unless something changed.
They had you set up for the one building, right?
No, they knew this was gonna be subdivided, and we brought in the, sufficient water to service the bat, we're gonna keep punching holes under the road, it's crazy, it's a state road.
But at the time, you didn't know what else was gonna be subdivided, so why would you?
We always knew it was gonna be industrial.
We can always clarify that.
And that was the agreement with the city, so, I mean, we'll clarify, we're, we're happy to put in one line and tee off, but, you know.
I just, the way I read it was, didn't sound the way you explained it.
We're happy to do it, we just picked this one up and keep going, it just was not set up, then we, then we get a wasted fixture here, but that's what they told us to do, so.
Alright, so the next steps for this application, there is a resolution on, for this meeting, to declare it an unlisted action, initiate the secret coordination review. After that, we move forward, the applicant, as I said, there's a couple of things the applicant needs to address with regard to the traffic, secret review of the potential build out, you know, as discussed, there are some uses. Or something that's being contemplated on the property, you know, we'll need some information on that.
It's in the only stage, but it's, it's, the principals live out here, and, and live in town, and they, they wanna bring a business out, so.
What's the size of proposal Lot Three?
Proposed Lot Three is six point five two acres.
I know this came over as a minor subdivision, but.
Then this is one, this is, I grabbed the wrong, this is the five or six lot.
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, the, the four lot is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So, when the solar farm went in, this was never sub, subdivided then, it just went on one big parcel?
Yes, yes, right, right now, it was, when we, the solar farm was reviewed, as well as the Pods building, we looked at the thirty-two acres.
Well, the solar farm came first, and then the Pods.
But it, but it was not, they're, they're one parcel, they were not, they were not subdivision by it, nope.
It wasn't subdivision then either.
They built the south end of the block.
Yeah.
But I was, we were not involved, and when we came along with this opportunity, town wanted it, IDA wanted it, everybody wanted it, and, but it was, they, they never processed any kind of subdivision on it, within the zoning, you know, the community has the rights, so. The agreement was struck to, to what we did, which was one permit issued for this building, and then we, before anything else could be issued, we'd have to get it subdivided.
The question about the size of Lot Three, was that contemplating some of those Water District comments about the potential, I mean, that's something that we're gonna need to address at, at some point. Probably, you know, in order to get water availability there, I mean, if something, if there could be some sort of agreement, or some sort of, you know, something that's decided upon between the Water District and the applicant, I mean, that might be appropriate.
Might be able to incorporate the one acre of open space too, if, if they're interested, I don't know, but.
Alright, I agree. So that's where, as I said, there's a resolution to start the secret coordination process, the applicant can address some of the issues that were raised in the staff report, and we can move forward.
Okay?
Thanks.
Okay, next item, on the agenda number five, Plaza Route fifty-eight, former Edwards Sporting Goods Center.
Hi.
You're Arthur.
Everybody should have gotten my staff report dated April eighteenth, and a copy of the most recent revised site plan we received May tenth.
Just your name for the record, please.
My name is Arthur Rast.
And you were with.
Sendluska Architects.
Okay.
If anyone needs an additional copy of the report, let me know. Um, this is for the Edwards Sports Center, which has been vacant for quite some time. It's located at thirteen fifty-two East Main Street, at the southwest corner of Old Country Road and East Main Street, in the Business Center zoning district. They're proposing to split up the building into four storefronts, do sod renovations, and do site improvements, including stormwater drainage, sanitary system, and parking repaving. The building is six thousand three oh six square feet. So just to let the board know, I, when I was reviewing the plans, I did note that the plan submitted to the ARB included some revisions, so I did review those, although it was on a smaller, reduced, um, plan. And then I did, although I got this last plan on, um, May tenth, I did look through it quickly today, because I wanted to see exactly what the board should comment upon, so, I did do a quick review of it. So on page two, you, you'll see a aerial view of the site. The site is directly east of a dental office on Route fifty-eight, directly south is a narrow piece of land owned by Suffolk County for flood control, and south of that is Shwing Electrical Supply. There's vacant wooded land across East Main Street with wetlands, but they're more than a hundred and fifty feet away. And across Route fifty-eight, there's a shopping center with the Department of Motor Vehicles and a seven eleven. The site is not within the sewer district, there are no sewers available anywhere nearby, the site is within the Riverhead Water District. The lot in question was created by the minor subdivision of Harryburg Obser, which was approved back in nineteen eighty-five, which split the property into Lot One to the west, which is now the dental office, and Lot Two to the east, the former Edwards Sporting Goods. So there were several conditions of approval, no further subdivision, no driveway entrances within seventy-five feet of the curve, of the corner. That all stormwater runoff shall be retained on the site by adequate structures. Which is interesting, because I didn't see any structures on the site, but also, the resolution was amended later on to indicate that if there was a building constructed on Lot One, there had to be a shared curb cut on Route fifty-eight. That the existing curb cut be closed, and the new curb cut include property on either side of the property boundary. So it looks like that was done, because a building permit was issued in nineteen ninety-two for an office on Lot One. So I did do a site visit on April eighth. There is a shared curb cut with the dental office parcel, and a curb cut on East Main Street, which was in quite poor condition. There was no differentiation between the parking lot for the dental office and the former Edwards. There were also no drainage structures, and there were quite a few, like, shallow areas in the parking lot where water was pooling. So, the existing parking stalls in the middle of the parking lot are all on the Edwards property, except the corner of one stall, which overlaps the property line. They are proposing a change to the parking stall layout. Parking for the dental office appears to be adjacent to that building and along the southern property boundary of that property. The only exterior lighting noted was building mounted flood lighting, which wouldn't be in conformance with the town's dark sky code, and ground mounted up light for a flag pole. So I did provide some pictures on pages four, five, and six, and seven, although I did number them improperly.
What are they gonna do with that garbage, they're gonna have four individual stores in there?
Yes.
What are they gonna do with the garbage, it's gonna be four individual dumpsters, or?
Um, they're showing one dumpster.
Do they put it in a corral, have it shown in a corral?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're showing curbing, new asphalt paving on the majority of the site, except for the right of way and a small portion nearby. Two new parking lot islands with pole mounted lighting, drainage structures, a new parking stall layout, as I said, new landscaping, and improved curb cut on East Main Street and sidewalk, sidewalk improvement adjacent to that curb cut. They're proposing use being wet retail with and without food. And that's confirmed in their sanitary calculations. I just made a note that wet retail with food would require sixteen seats or less, and single service utensils as per the Department of Health. The project is considered a type two action, the replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site. We originally thought that a zoning ZBA variance may be needed for lot coverage, but then they did delete the roof over entries to the storefronts when they changed the building style, so that no longer applies. When the ARB originally looked at the plan, they were not happy with it. They wanted more contemporary, simple elements to reflect the current simplicity of the existing building. More variety, less symmetry, no pitched roofs, so. I did want the board to take a look at the elevation, since it's really up to the planning board, what you like or don't like. So I did question on the original plan, it showed these dashed lines, and it didn't indicate what that was. Now indicating that it's going to be brushed aluminum, aluminum mechanical screening, because the mechanicals are on the roof. I also requested that the colors and materials be actually labeled on the plan, because they weren't labeled on the plan approved by the ARB. So I'll just check and make sure that those match. I did also question, because it looked like it was some sort of sign proposed, um, they are now saying they're going to remove the existing sign, which actually goes off the property a little bit into the road right of way. But they will need a setback variance for this sign, because it's, um, beyond, it impinges on just that. So, uh, just wanted to confirm the board is okay with this elevation.
I'm gonna just hold this up so they can see.
Sure.
Elevation.
I mean, compared to what it is now, it's just a white block square building.
Yeah, vast improvement.
So, huge improvement.
Just wanted to confirm before we go any further, um.
Okay, well, the lighting's gonna be dark stack to find.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that.
We'll get to it, but yeah.
They're removing the existing septic tank and leaching pool and putting in a new sanitary system in the parking lot.
And, just to clarify that, right now it's just a cesspool. There's no septic tank or leaching pool, it's just literally a cesspool, goes straight out to it, so, that's getting removed and.
You started the process with the health department?
We actually have preliminary approval, um, minus a few small alterations to the drawing.
Cause you're on the density.
Yes, no, we, we have a preliminary approval from the health department, it's just granted, you know, for a couple of changes on the drawing, and removal of the existing system, which we have DPW, you know, our pollution control approval for.
As far as the Water District goes, there's an eight inch main in the roadway, and there's currently a one inch service. As per the Water District, if the service size does not change, only key money fees would apply. I'm still waiting on review by the fire marshal, um, so I'm not sure if that could change, but they will let me go.
They're not gonna share one service between all those stores, are they?
Um, we're looking into possibly, you know, making the service larger, we have to talk to the Water District still about an availability letter for that.
Into a calculation.
Yeah.
Um, as far as storm. Um, as far as stormwater goes, um, I did note the soil boring indicates that the groundwater level is five point eight feet below grade. They're proposing storm tech drainage structures, um, due to the high water table. Um, however, the detail for the storm tech, um, drainage structure indicates.
Yeah, it runs right through that area.
No, no, I mean, it's stormwater.
So, how does that five foot eight impact your septic?
So, in order to get around that, we had to use, um, storm full clusters, or, I shouldn't say, um, they have these two-foot clusters that come in five space, and that's the shallowest that the health department allows for. Even with the height of the groundwater as it stands, we still didn't meet the minimum requirement, so to get it to, in order to handle that, we're actually grading the, uh, site up by about a foot, a foot and a half more to clear the groundwater. That's both for the, uh, stormwater drainage as well as for the sanitary.
Um.
Go back to the ARB, what, what's the status?
They approved it.
They approved it.
They, they liked it.
Is there any?
They're okay with it.
Any color endurings or nothing yet?
We do have a color board that we did present to them, um, it's at our office, so we could somehow, you know, get that to them.
They liked it? They?
They approved it.
They approved it, yes.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Recommended approval.
Well, yes. I misspoke. Um, as I said, the boring shows the groundwater at about five point eight feet below grade. The, um, detail for the storm tech unit indicates the groundwater is seven point seven one five feet below grade, and that shows that there's two feet from the drainage structure to the water level. So, that's a little bit, um, conflicting, so I think we need a little more.
I believe that in this current set of drawings, we did address that, I'm pretty sure.
No. No, I, I double-checked it.
Okay, then we'll address that.
Um, also, I didn't see the location of the boring on the plan, unless.
It is on there.
Yeah, if you could just point it out, just 'cause it's sometimes hard to see.
Yeah. Right there.
Oh, okay, very good. It's in the parking lot. Yep, okay.
Just north of the parking island closest to the building.
All right, as far as parking calculations go, um, they're required to have twenty-six parking spaces, and they were showing twenty-six. However, the, um, handicap access aisle is apparent to be eight foot wide, and it was not. So what I had suggested was that they carve out a parking stall out of this island here. Um, what was done is that they widened the access aisle to eight foot, but reduced the width of the handicap stalls to nine feet, which is not allowable. So, um, what I would still suggest is carving out a stall out of this island.
Okay, is there a possibility of, perchance, making, instead of being ten feet the sidewalk from the building, reducing that to be able to get the spacing it requires?
Um, yeah, you're not required to have a ten-foot walkway in front of the building, um.
I, I think for us, in terms of laying out the parking, that's gonna be a little bit more, um, desirable.
Okay, that, that's fine with me, it was just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll make that work.
I'm just trying to offhand, what's the width we would require for the spaces themselves for the handicap?
Um, all, all of your spaces have to be ten foot wide, including your handicap.
Okay, so it's two, so two feet would be what we'd need to make up the difference.
Right.
Okay.
So that, that appears acceptable.
That's fine.
I thought, I just thought you wanted ten foot for some reason.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also, um, they need a handicap pathway from the sidewalk to the entrances to the building. Um, it looks like they're showing an extension to the sidewalk now, but it says, um, for ramp detail, see drawing blank, so.
Right, I, I, it, it just needs to be added to the drawings, that's all.
Um, I was a little concerned, because the, the landscaped area kind of pitches a bit, um, but if you're building up the, the parking area, I'm not sure, you know.
You know, existing grade is fif- it's about fifteen point one six, and it drops to fifteen point one two, so there isn't much of a, a difference in the grade there. It should be more than fine for handicap accessibility, um, it's just a matter of showing a cross-section of that piece of the sidewalk to show that we're within compliance.
Okay, um, I didn't have a chance to check that the meets and bounds, if the meets and bounds were revised to match the survey, but it looks like you did add some additional information. Um, I did request that the zoning data include the requirement for contiguous landscaped area, and then.
I have to update that as well, that's all.
It, it definitely looks like it's going to, um, comply.
Uh-huh.
Um, we still need a planning board certification box on the architectural plans. Um, is gas gonna be provided for the building?
Not that I'm aware of.
'Cause if there's going to be, um.
Unless it's already.
Food, usually, that's something they want.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, we'll just have to verify that with the owner, and if we are, we'll put it on there, if not, we'll, you know, stipulate how we're going to address that.
Um, the minimum side yard listed has to be corrected still, um. I would also suggest just taking off, um, things like lawn area and landscape area.
Leave that, leave that for the landscape and plan.
Leave that for the landscape plan, 'cause there's some discrepancies. Um, as far as the exterior lighting goes, um, I indicated I would like a, um, notation indicating all the existing building-mounted lighting would be removed, because it was not in compliance. Um, are you proposing any building-mounted lighting, 'cause that's typically posed?
Most of our lighting in terms of, on the building, um, it's a little more evident on the elevation, to be honest.
Yeah, okay.
You just looked that quick. So, it is tough to tell, but, so here's, you know, your cornier, you know, storefront windows you'd expect. But in between here are, similar to on the group where we're doing the mechanical screening, um, we're using metal panels that have perforated, so, kind of quarter-inch, half-inch holes throughout, and we're gonna backlit inside there, so what happens is, at night, basically you'll see the sort of recessed lighting in, you know, that area, and then the metal sort of gives a kind of a interesting, you know, look of that. So, that's most of the lighting we're doing, but then, if not, on the, um, where we show the signage in the front of the building, that's gonna have LED, you know, backlit for those lights as well.
So we'll just need to see that on the, um, on the lighting plan and the specs of the lighting, even if it's partially screened. Um, then it'll still have to, you know, meet requirements. Um, also, I'm not sure if that flagpole is going to stay or not, it's not shown. Um, if it's going to, going to be removed, the, uh, uplight from the ground has to be removed.
We're, we're looking to remove all lighting and anything associated with that front, I mean, I, I show it to be removed, I have to show that note there.
Okay.
But.
Um, the town engineer wanted a photometric grid on the lighting plan, so that still has to be shown. Um, as far as the supplementary guidelines, um, you know, just some minor things, um. Since Ed did bring it up, this is the dumpster enclosure, it's going to be, um, let me go to the detail page to tell you the exact size.
Should be S P three or four. Two is, yeah, it's gonna be three or four, is the least.
It looks like it's gonna be six, is that nine foot? Nine foot by?
The pad itself is gonna be a nine by nine pad.
Thereabouts.
Yeah.
Um, so unless anybody finds that insufficient, that's what they're proposing.
You should be able to fit a dumpster that's roughly seven by seven in there.
Um, I requested, um, some more information on the gate, because no gate detail was provided. Um, it says it's gonna be chain link. Um, it should be the, um, same black vinyl slats, and I suggested, uh, black-coated chain link. Um, as far as, um, other supplemental guidelines, there's a, one that says delivery and loading shall, to the extent, possibly restricted to the hours between eight and five P M. on weekdays. Um, there's no residential uses adjacent, they're about three hundred and fifty feet to the west, so unless the board feels a condition to that is necessary, um, I would not necessarily include it. Um, off-street parking is not supposed to be within ten feet of any property line, although.
We did revise that. It, it's a little tough to read, but they'll say ten feet.
Yeah, um, I would just make it larger, and I measured it, and it appears to be less than ten feet. Not that I think that's a major problem, it's adjacent to the Suffolk County flood control property. Um, one thing I didn't, I did wanna make sure to talk to the board about is, um, cross-access. Um, there's a shared curb cut area, but there's really no, um, shared cross-access between the properties. So, technically, if somebody's at the dental office and they wanna go across here and go onto Main Street, they're not allowed to, or vice versa. So, what I would just suggest is, like we usually do, a future cross-access agreement. Um, so yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the curb cut, um, the driveway is supposed to be five feet from the side property line, it looks like.
That's been revised since, um, the last submission.
Okay, it looks like it's about five feet, maybe a little less, again, if DOT thinks it's okay, I don't think it's an issue.
The funny thing is, is that, um, so we're already into the DOT, we're waiting for comment, initial comments, and, um, you know, the plan we sent to them didn't have the five feet off, so this is actually much more current than what even DOT has, so, you know, I will have to get that back at some point, but either way.
Yeah, as long as DOT's okay.
I, I don't think they're gonna, uh, I don't think they're gonna have an issue, but, either way.
Um, there's a requirement for orchard planting for parking lots with twenty-one or more spaces. Um, the, these parking islands have these, um, light poles on them, so I don't think it's really practical to have trees on them. I did suggest that they add, um, three glenar, um, flowering trees along here, and they have done that. Um, so that really makes up for it. Um, also, um, there's a requirement for, um, parking lot islands being landscape of ground-covered grasses or low shrubs. Um,
Or rocks.
They, or rocks. They are showing some low.
I'm gonna get somebody to do it.
They are showing some low plantings, um, so I think they're doing what they can with an existing site, um.
I mean, one of the things that we've commented on other projects is the irrigation system.
Right, they are showing an irrigation system.
From private well?
I'm suggesting a private well.
Yes.
Um.
Because the water district has limitations.
That's true.
So we're asking develop an irrigation system to be connected to a well.
I'd kinda flip over to the landscape plan.
Yeah, it is quite funny how the town engineer had it.
You could probably bang a well point in your hand.
Um, the landscaping plan had previously shown a boxwood hedge along the, um, northern border of the, the, um, parking area, so the parking would be less visible from Route fifty-eight, for some reason that was deleted, I recommend putting it back. Um, does the board have any strong feelings on that?
Why was it taken on?
I'm not sure.
I don't have a really good answer for you for that, to be honest. Um, being frank, I think dealing, having to sort of work with all the other things in terms of landscaping, it might have just gotten lost in translation, so if you want the boxwoods back, I don't see an issue with that, you know?
Okay, so we'll add them back?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Um, there's one existing tree that's a, a pretty big size, and you can see it on pages six and seven in photos, um.
A, um, yeah.
You can see it on, um, the bottom two pictures on page six, and the top picture, well, the only picture on page seven. Um, so I suggested that it show, be shown on the plans, and be labeled as to be retained.
I did, after our meeting and after also this was submitted, I did include it.
Okay.
I did a, a field visit yesterday just to see where it was located, and it's actually directly behind this drain. So technically, it's not on the property, but we're, you know, as long as it's not gonna interfere with our construction or whatever, we're okay with retaining the tree,
Okay. Oh.
but it's not on our property technically either.
Um.
Based off of this survey, at least.
Okay, does the, the board want the tree located, or?
I, I do have a.
You can save it.
No, it's on his property, don't worry about it.
No, we're not gonna show it.
Okay.
Yes, we'll, we'll those back into it.
I saw nothing.
Is it alive?
It's alive, it's quite alive, actually.
So you shouldn't be going on the adjacent property, so.
Yeah.
Um, no street trees, um, were proposed originally, they are showing some street trees now. However, there, there are these very narrow trees that I had recommended along the driveway. Um, they're gonna need trees with a bigger canopy and more of them to meet the street tree requirement, so.
Do you have a recommendation?
Um, not off the top of my head, but I can think about it and let you know, yep.
Don't let us know, you know, I, I, I'd be the first to tell you, I'm, I'm not an expert when it comes to this stuff, so any insight would be greatly appreciated.
I think there are overhead wires, so just as long as it's a, um, wire-friendly tree.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we need the caliper of the tree. Um, so I already discussed, um, water district and fire marshal, um, town engineer. Title was found to be unacceptable, 'cause it was missing some information, including a fifty-year chain of title with copies of deeds, um, copies of the previously reported covenants, declaration restrictions, and easements. And, um, I did note that it should include, um, a particular covenant regarding Suffolk County, Suffolk County Department of Health Services. Um, Suffolk County Department of Public Works says that, um, they want the plan to show ADA-compliant handicap ramps at the curb cut on fifty-eight and the corner, um, of the property, which it looks like they done on the site plan, so.
Yes, um, when we submitted the DOT, we had a full drawing, a simplified drawing, just showing the actual curb cuts, with the improvements we're gonna make into those, and so essentially on this revision, we took exactly what we did for that drawing and just applied it to this, so.
And then DOT, they wanted, um, that, they indicated that the sidewalk would have to be replaced, um, on Route twenty-five, curbing, um, they wanted the shoulder pavement repaired, um, repairing of the drainage, um, install a decorative red mow strip, um, it looks like bricks, um, in the sidewalk area, um, around the curb cut and extending to the western property line. So, um, they had requested a PDF, which hopefully be provided.
We did.
Uh-huh. Um, and they'll give some, um, more formal comments. Um, I'm waiting for the Suffolk County Planning Commission, but I suspect that they'll just say it's local determination. So I think that's basically it, um, I can set up a hearing as the next step, and we can go from there.
I think we can, general question.
Sure.
Doing the analysis, and I listened in the, you know, fourth, I said, your sewer is two thousand feet away. Did you look at the cost? Versus what you have to do as far as the site raising the grade pretty long, which is, did you look at it, force me?
We didn't really look at that option.
That's sort of costly, but it's still down, down to cost.
I mean. Yeah, I, I mean, I would imagine the reason why we probably didn't look at that to begin with is just, from experience, it probably would have been way more costly to do that than to try and do this.
Was it two thousand feet?
Yeah.
I don't know if I said it's two thousand feet or more than two thousand.
Yeah. It's El, it's where Elton Street is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a long way.
Yeah, it's a long way. It's, it's a lot, I mean.
You're, you're gonna have to raise the grade where you are.
Well, the funny thing is, not only are we raising the grades, we're also taking the, where the existing slab is in the building, we're raising that up as well, that way we, you know.
In order to.
Right.
But you wouldn't have to do that.
That is true, but then again, it's, it's a, it's a lot of cost as well to go with that logistics.
Yeah, I guess, that's why I was just asking if you, if you looked at it.
Yeah, no, I, I think.
For the stats, right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, go through all that effort and then just for nothing, so.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are the resolutions. Before we vote on the resolutions, any public comments on them? Please come up to the podium.
Is that on, is the switch on?
The switch is here, on the top. Oh, wait. I am not an, oh, I did it?
There you go.
No. Okay, we'll start again. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barbara Blas, Blas, and I live in Jamesport. I just have to say I'm a little concerned and a little disappointed. Mr. Chairman, if you remember, the first time we had this resolution on for discussion, the resolution had actually not been made available to the public, nor was the map, and you were very gracious to have both of those put on the website for the public's review. And today, I understand that a new resolution was posted on the website, and a consistency analysis addendum was posted again today, as of the tenth, I believe it's dated May tenth. It's a little disappointing, as I'm saying, and it frankly puts the public at a little bit of a disadvantage because we were not, we were operating off the former resolution, albeit it was indicated that it was a draft. I'm going to read the consistency analysis addendum, and, oh, I should also add, I actually filed a FOIL request yesterday to ask for any additional information contained in the file post-dated April tenth, which was the last day that I physically inspected the file and asked if I could have electronic copy of anything that may have been entered into the file after that date, so that I hopefully would have received information that was relevant to any of the questions that were raised during the public hearing. And I was told the file was not available yet. And of course, the consistency analysis, which was dated May tenth, would have been one of those documents that I could have received and probably saved Mr. Murfree a little bit of an embarrassment because he references the public hearing on the map as being April second, and in fact, it was May second that we had the public hearing. So I just, you know, those kinds of things are, are less than, or more than unsettling to the public. You have spent more time on applications here today, on, in some case, on one of them, than we have had as public discussion on this incredibly significant application that you have before you. We've never had that kind of review. I find that rather amazing. Be that as it may, I'm going to read my statement as it was originally written, albeit there are some things that you may or may not have addressed in your revised resolution. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on proposed Resolution twenty nineteen dash zero twenty-six. These comments are respectfully submitted to preserve the integrity of the process and to achieve protection of the sensitive environment found at EPCAL while providing for the necessary economic redevelopment we all want. My comments are in no way meant to be personal criticisms, and I really hope that no one has taken them personally, contrary to the suggestion by a councilwoman. I will continue to participate in a process designed to promote public involvement, and I don't agree that my status as a former appointed and elected official is reason for me to remain silent. We are now at a critical juncture. The adoption of the finding statement by this board would, for all intents and purposes, close seeker for this action. Most of my comments will address the reasons that the resolution should not be approved at this time, and those reasons are rooted in the current seeker record, the prior seeker record, and the necessary additional seeker action by the lead agency. The current record. As of April tenth of two thousand nineteen, the planning department file on the EPCAL subdivision lacked the necessary EAF for the amended eight-lot application. The lead agency should attach a revised EAF and circulate it to all involved agencies, given that this eight-lot subdivision was never analyzed in any prior seeker review. A letter from outside counsel is not a substitute for an EAF. This should be done before you act on your resolution. The prior seeker record. This property was indeed the subject of extensive environmental review. In the town's adopted final supplemental GEIS, the town's finding statement, and the consistency analysis, which you are poised to approve today, you will find references to the DEC conditions and mitigation measures designed to ensure protection of sensitive habitats identified on the property. Let me emphasize something here, because I think it's actually really important. After the town board accepted its final supplemental GEIS, they circulated it to all the involved agencies. There's a minimum ten, ten-day comment period, they actually, to their credit, extended it for thirty days. All agencies thirty days had an opportunity to reply. The only comment received, the only one during that time, was from George Hamrath, the deputy regional permit administrator for the DEC. His correspondence addressed several items he wanted to make sure were included in the town board's finding statement. The WSRR, the WSRR permit, the Calverton Sewer District, the long-eared bat, the elfin butterfly, best management practices from the Audubon, salamander breeding ponds, comprehensive habitat protection plan, non-disturbance buffers, and the list was rather extensive, that's just a sample. But that correspondence also contained the caveat that I've read before, but I'm going to read again. Quote, "In the event the proposed subdivision, subdivision is modified from that contained in the final supplemental GEIS, the town would ensure that such modifications would be equally protective of the sensitive environmental features on the EPCAL property," close quotes. So the adopted town finding statement did incorporate some of those comments and clearly further stated that of the twenty-one hundred and seven acres, five hundred and ninety-three would be available for development, and fifteen hundred and fourteen acres would be preserved or protected. As recommended in the consistency analysis dated April first, two thousand nineteen, your finding statement should also acknowledge, acknowledge by reciting or citing, citing by reference the obviously important mitigating measures designed to protect the sensitive habitats and the species that are articulated in the lead agency's finding statement. This should be done before you act on your resolution. We have been told by attorney Isler that during a meeting he attended, he said this at the last, our last meeting, during a meeting, during a meeting that he attended, the DEC agreed not to require these conditions and mitigating measures now, but rather later, when development is proposed. Not only is this contradictory to everything that we've read, but it's troublesome that such a significant departure from the original, the official record wouldn't be more memorialized in the DEC or by the DEC in writing, considering the emphasis and importance the DEC gave to these very conditions? No follow-up letter, no letter to, memo to file, nothing, it's just, it's like hearsay. And we recognize how important it was to the DEC to acknowledge this information. Should you omit these citations from your resolution on the map, absent any written documentation or correspondence from the DEC, a future review of the file will leave your record woefully inadequate and indefensible on this point. Written documentation from the DEC affirming this modification should be received before you act on this resolution. Additional seeker action by the lead agency. We can all agree with attorney Isler on this. The eight-lot subdivision has been proposed to facilitate the sale of the property. You've heard this before, but again, worth repeating. Part six one seven point four B parentheses four states, "The application, sale, lease, annexation, or other transfer of one hundred or more contiguous acres of land by state or local agencies constitutes a type-one action." The town board must undertake those necessary steps by typing the action, the sale of the property, completing and circulating a new full environmental assessment form, and issuing a determination of significance by resolution. This was never done, and the, and the town can't claim it was covered in any prior environmental statement as there's no reference whatsoever to the sale of one hundred or more contiguous acres specifically. It's ludicrous to suggest that the qualified and eligible process undertaken by the town board pursuant to the urban renewal law is a substitute for seeker. The mere inclusion of the words, quote, "sale of the property" in a whereas clause of CDA Resolution twenty eighteen dash ten, ten, deeming CAT qualified and eligible carries no weight and is not dispositive of the issue. The decision to annex the property is what triggers the type-one action, not the determination of a qualified buyer. In my opinion, this is not a weak link in the process, it's a missing link. Item three in the resolved clause of your resolution, and I don't know, that may have changed, I didn't look at, at the current resolution, stating that no further study under seeker is required at this time for this amended eight-lot subdivision map is not, as indicated in the consistency analysis, your call to make as an involved agency. I strongly suggest that you table the resolution until such time that the town board has an opportunity to fulfill its lead agency responsibilities and to complete its seeker record before you take action on the resolution. It will also give you an opportunity to amend your resolution to be internally consistent and in harmony with the prior environmental record. May I respectfully suggest a statement that all currently recorded protective covenants filed against the EPCAL property also be included by reference in your resolution and restored as notations on your eight-lot map as they have appeared on prior maps? The covenants run with the land, there are no notations on your map. Finally, I submitted, I mentioned that I submitted the FOIL, and I was hoping to get information on the mechanism available to the planning board to transfer development from Lot eight to Lot six, other than a town board contractual obligation. It's not called out in the PD district. The need for a yield map to determine what development exists on Lot eight. Determination of yield is a function of the planning board during subdivision. We've heard it for three or four different applications today, we all sat through it. It's a planning board function during subdivision process. The note is already on your map, yet the yield will somehow be determined during a future site plan review by the town board at some later date? You, you won't even know, they're doing, they're doing yield during site plan. And yet it's on your map, you have no idea what yield is going to be, it's like signing a blank check. I, I don't understand that process at all. The obvious development constraints on Lot eight beg for planning rationale as to its purpose other than to fulfill a contractual obligation by the town board. And finally, the discrepancy in the maps, which I understand, according to the consistency analysis addendum, that May first was a date that, I don't know, explain it, Mr. Murphy, if you would.
The dates was incorrect, we noted in the consistency analysis, and so we just corrected that, that's all that does.
But what happened on April first in terms of a map? Is there something that's, that's?
May first.
I'm sorry, May first, I said April first, right, May first. It was redrawn to scale, so is it the map that we saw was not at the appropriate scale? Is that how I read that?
That was it.
So the, the map that we, that the board held a public hearing on was not at the appropriate scale? Is that what you're?
It was a recommendation from the Townsfolk Engineering, the map scale changed. So we did, that's all that changed, nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your patience, and again, I hope you recognize the tremendous disadvantage once again put by, by the actions of not posting this before this morning. In fact, I checked before I left early this morning to do errands, and there was nothing on, on the website. So most of us are seeing this now for the first time. I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening. My name's Phil Barbado, Jamesport. Before I start this, I just wanna emphasize that I'm not here for any personal gain, political or otherwise. I'm here because I care deeply about environmental protection and maintaining and ensuring the, the future quality of life for the citizens of our town. I firmly believe that you all are here for the same, based on the same motivation. So I think we're on the same page there. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak on this resolution. I, I believe that the members of this board are thoughtful and sincerely dedicated to your work of providing good planning for our town, and I thank you for your service. I know it's not an easy job. Unfortunately, the documents are being changed almost as we speak here, and they seem to be changing based on comments that have already been given to you. But they're not being made public until today. As, as Ms. Blas mentioned, the, this, the latest iteration of the resolution is dated today. How are we supposed to keep up? How are you supposed to keep up? There are new, there's a new eleventh whereas in the resolution, and a new paragraph number three under resolved. And frankly, both of them appear to be specifically designed to facilitate the future development of currently protected environmentally, environmental significant areas. If you read it carefully, that's what it looks like. And I'll give you an example. The new paragraph three under resolved has wording, "Consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available, the action is the one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable?" Since when is that an environmental type review? And that adverse impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practical by incorporating as conditions to the decision those mitigating measures that were identified as practicable? Who determines practicable when you're talking about protecting endangered species? I don't know where those words came from, but they scare me, and I hope they scare you. This resolution, even the current version, has several serious flaws that deserve your careful and thorough evaluation. It should not be acted upon until these flaws are corrected. I'd like to describe them for your consideration. First, the subdivision application is only there before this board to facilitate the sale of one thousand six hundred and forty-four acres of town-owned property to a private entity. The map itself is contained in Exhibit A of the proposed contract between the Riverhead Community Development Agency and the Calverton Aviation and Technology. That contract also requires the town to approve and file this subdivision map with the county clerk. This much is acknowledged in the ninth whereas of the subject resolution. However, what is not acknowledged is the fact that state environmental law, Title six, chapter, as has been mentioned already, Title six, chapter six, part six seventeen dash point four B four, considers, quote, "The acquisition, sale, lease, annexation, or other transfer of one hundred or more contiguous acres of land by a state or local agency," end quote, to be a type-one action under seeker. The subject resolution cannot therefore resolve that, quote, "No further study under seeker." SECRE is required." It's black and white, it's right there in state law. You're transferring a hundred acres to a private entity from a public type one. The second troubling item, the lines on the eight-lot subdivision map are not a mere rearrangement of the 50-lot subdivision map. This fact is actually acknowledged in the, what used to be the 10th whereas of the subject resolution, which describes lots six, seven, and eight as, quote, "constituting a new parcel not depicted on the former 50-lot map," end quote. So how can the eight-lot map even be considered as a mere continuation of the subdivision process? In addition, lot eight has been carved out of former lot 47, creating new lines on the map which were not there previously, specifically on the eastern portion of lot, new lot number eight. As a result, this eight-lot subdivision application is new and not a continuation of the old one. The third item, the environmental review requirements from the FSGEIS have not been met. Page 17 of the FSGEIS lists the, quote, "conditions and thresholds which, if met, would allow full development of specific parcels within EPCAL without the need for further SECRE compliance." So if they had done that, they wouldn't need SECRE compliance. But the third bullet lists this condition, provide a 1,000-foot buffer around each wetland that is identified as a tiger salamander pond on the subdivision map, including those wetlands that are situated offsite but whose buffer area would fall within the boundaries of the EPCAL property, end quote. They're not on the map. So this is not in conformance with the FSGEIS. The eight-lot subdivision that is the subject of this resolution does not provide this required information, so it cannot be considered SECRE compliant. The fourth issue, contrary to statements in the consistency analysis on page four and in the 15th whereas of the subject resolution, there are development plans for this subdivision that will require a new environmental analysis. Exhibit B of the contract contains the, quote, "intended development plan." Additional details were provided by James Lima Planning and Development during the Q and E hearing, and are contained in CAT's Economic Benefits Analysis, page 23, which shows a baseline construction of at least 2 million square feet and a creation of 2,879 jobs. This will require an environmental review of water supply, wastewater disposal, air emissions, traffic, and other impacts that are not examined, that were not examined during the previous FSGEIS. It's also my understanding that the town has hired an engineering firm to design and prepare estimates for building sewers and water supply lines to service this development. How can an engineering company be designing water and sewage supply if there's no proposed Fifth item, the application process has not been followed appropriately, as documented so well by Ms. Blas. For example, there is no application letter in the file, and the eight-lot map is missing the important environmental protection information, as she's already pointed out. The town, in its rush to submit this subdivision, may be skipping important steps and leaving out required information. This is the biggest deal any of us are ever going to be involved in. We can't rush through it, we have to be careful with it. And we now know that the purchaser of this land has manipulated local governments all over North America to the detriment of the taxpaying public. This has been documented by reporters from our local newspapers, as well as reporters from other states where this purchaser has operated. For the town of Riverhead, the sheer magnitude of this land sale, this subdivision application, and this resolution make it imperative that this board consider all the facts and make a carefully thought-out and reasonable decision. Rushing to proceed can only result in a decision that will harm the future of this town and its residents. Frankly, it's time for a reality check on this action, and this board and you members are the ones that can do it and must do it. Therefore, this board must not approve Resolution Number 2019-26. Thank you very much for your attention, and I.
Yes, I do have a question. Where you read "no further study under SECRE is required," I'm reading in the resolution, which we were part of, and we mandated that be included. On page four, number two, it says that it will be required when each site is developed. So, am I not taking your point correctly?
My point is that the requirement that would have to be fulfilled in order for no further SECRE requirement, analysis to be done, is that that has to be on the map. And the map's in front of you, and it's not on that map. So therefore, that condition from the FSGEIS has not been met.
So this is not, this is not approved in the map today, this resolution that's in front of us?
But what's going to happen when this resolution is passed? You're not going to, you're not going to place that requirement on the, on the subsequent, whatever map you approve later on? That has to be in your findings statement, doesn't it? That the information on wetland protection and habitat protection has to be on the map. That was my main point, I don't know if that came across correctly.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your work.
My name's Kathy McGraw, and I live, I'm a resident of Riverhead, and I'm certainly no authority on SECRE and the processes that Barbara and Phil have talked about here. But I'm really, really concerned about the denial of due process that's occurred here today. I looked at the agenda for this meeting, and I looked online this morning, and I did not see a revised resolution. And when I walked in today, there's a completely different resolution before you today, and there's been no public hearing on it. There's been no real opportunity for the public to prepare comments in response to this resolution, because we didn't have this resolution. And from my quick reading of it, I think this resolution does so much more than the prior resolution that was reviewed, or there was a public hearing on, on May 2nd. Your consistency analysis that was done by Mr. Seaman made the point, and that resolution talked about, it was your statement of findings as an involved agency. And in his consistency report, he said only the lead agency, which is the town, can make a determination as to whether a supplemental environmental impact statement is necessary. The resolution you have before you right now seems to be jumping the gun and making a conclusion on behalf of the town that SECRE has been followed, that there is no need for any further SECRE review at this time. And I'm looking at the paragraph on page three whereas, the first whereas paragraph, and it seems to say, what it's trying to do is say that the town, in that resolution, found that no SECRE review, further review was necessary. But that's not what that resolution was about at all. This is a misquote. This is a sleight of hand that is leading to a conclusion that the lead agency here has not ever made, because that resolution only found that CAT is qualified and eligible. It says, "that resolution found that the sale of the property, now comprised of lots six, seven, and eight, which includes of necessity the subdivision of the property, was," and then it starts quoting from the resolution. The words at the beginning of that sentence are not in the resolution. Somebody, a crafty person, used that language and is relying on that resolution for the conclusion that the lead agency has determined there's no need for a supplemental environmental impact statement. And I would urge you to go back and read 2018-10, because it does not do what you are saying in this, in this resolution that it does, namely that no further SECRE review is required. And you even go so far as to resolve that the requirements of state law have been met with respect to SECRE, and you're relying on this paragraph to reach that conclusion. And I, I proposed, I say to you that that resolution did not do what this paragraph says it did. I just, I just find it incredible that this is being, this, this significant change was presented without any real notice to the people. And town government shouldn't work this way. You work on behalf of the people of Riverhead, and the people of Riverhead have a right to give you input on these kinds of decisions. And I would just ask you to not trample our due process rights, and postpone, look more carefully, see what this resolution is really doing, because I think it's going much further than you, than you, the planning board, should be going with respect to the SECRE process. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
John McCalliff, from Rowan Oak Landing, area of Riverhead. I'm not any kind of a legal or land use expert, or even an environmental expert, but I have been following this EPCAL process intensely in the last three years. And I want to enter into your discussion, not so much the kind of technical analysis that's been very helpful, but something about a larger point. I mean, it seems that resting on your shoulders now is an even more important role than you might normally play. It was said at the meeting a month ago by one of you that the process was moving much faster than it should, or it would normally, and I think that still needs to be examined. My understanding is there is a year in which this mapping, lotting process has to be completed, and so it's not clear why a decision has to be made now. I want to throw, give a couple of reasons that not making a decision would be appropriate. Just, we were, all of us were here this morning for the work session of the town board, which in part because we thought there was going to be some discussion of, of the hiring of outside counsel. There both wasn't and was. They went into the meeting saying that that would be part of an executive session. Nevertheless, they spent about 10 minutes towards the end of, of the work session talking about it. We now under, and there is clearly division in the board about hiring an independent counsel, whether it was necessary. We understand now from the executive session that there was, in fact, a decision to bring a resolution to a special CDA meeting at the time of the next board meeting, which will be next Wednesday. They have agreed amongst themselves, that is, those who favor outside counsel, who that would be, which was the obstacle the last time that topic was discussed. Therefore, I think it's reasonable to assume there is a majority in the town board that next Wednesday will start the process of appointing a special counsel. Now, how much that is based on lack of faith of, in the current legal presentations to the board and to other agencies in town, and how much it's simply a different kind of expertise that is needed? I think individual members may have different reasons or motivations, but the reality is that there will be a deeper dive into the implications of badly flawed contract that is what's creating this process now. It's a flaw that goes back to the mysterious trance, or emergence of, or movement from 600 developable acres to the gift of an additional 1,000 acres, minutes of the board which are not consistent with the actual watching of the videotape as to what was decided, when it was decided in the previous board. It involves the action in the last meeting of the previous board, in which the person presenting the resolution, Mr. Dunleavy, said that this.
Mr. McCalliff, if I could, and I say this with all due respect, because I know this issue is very important to you, but I'm going to ask you to please keep your comments directly in line with what's at task here, and that's this resolution that we're contemplating tonight. I think you're getting off the beaten path.
Okay.
I do agree that it's related, but really, the town, whether they hire or not hire outside counsel, whether you like the contract or not, is really not anything to do with this board here today.
Okay, well, it goes to the point of whether the context in which your action is being taken could be changing fundamentally, and therefore whether proceeding on a process which has been subject to very serious question in terms of the, the lack of the resolution being available to the public, that that fits within this larger, and the comment made in this board at the beginning about being pushed to move on action faster than would be the norm. And so, yeah, I would, I will not say anything more about it, and you probably know it far, far better than I do in any case. I think the crucial, this, who knows what matters, but as I was sitting around, and the supervisor was being interviewed by Channel 12, I mentioned that there would be, we were going to this meeting, and that one of the concerns was that the board itself had, as the principal agency, which is not the term you used, but the lead agency, still had to make some kind of recommendation to the planning board, and the supervisor said, "We're not the lead agency." Now, obvious, and she thought that you were the lead agency. So there's some, and here was just said that they were the lead agency. So obviously, some lack of discussion or understanding between these two crucial, crucial institutions. And I, I come back to, to finally reiterating that, that I think the issue of, that you have is, that's before you, is a somewhat larger question that has to do with your role of protecting the kind of town that Riverhead is, and the environment in which its people live, and that rather than move ahead on this, that again, postponing a final decision and clarifying once again sort of why the, the descriptions of environmental areas are not on the eight-lot map, you know, those kinds of things I think need much deeper discussion than, than have been available so far, and I'm sure that comes as not a welcome bit of news on a, on a long agenda, but I think we do have a year in which this is thoroughly considered and all of what's going on. is thoroughly considered, and all of what's going on when there's a different set of people in this room should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I'm gonna, uh, just a couple of questions. Um, can we keep, if Mr. Isler could come up, um, just to clarify a couple of things that we've heard here today. So we've heard several times reference made to no further SEQA, and I, and also the requirement for municipality transfers, 100 acres or more, I think that's, it was in one of the comments. If you could please speak towards those two specific issues that were raised.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. In answering your question, I just want to make a point for the record in response to something Ms. Blas said about hearsay statements from the DEC, and this is relevant to your question. If you, uh, the consistency, consistency report prepared by Mr. Seaman, on the second to last page at the bottom, refers to, and I'm just going to read it, "As per the agenda, agenda items for June 2, 2017 meeting among Riverhead Town Representatives and the NYSDC regarding natural resource permitting, the NYSDCs determined that an endangered species incidental take permit would not be required of the town for the eight lot subdivision. The NYSDC stated, quote, 'If the description of the modified proposed action remains as mostly described, parentheses, subdivision of the acreage into approximately five lots, two of which will be purchased by Luminati Aerospace, which remaining parcels retained by the town for various municipal purposes,' closed parentheses, Riverhead will not be required an environmental species incidental take permit for the subdivision. The modified action,' which referring to this eight lot sub, would turn out to be an eight lot subdivision currently, 'will not require, will only require a DEC wild scenic and recreational rivers system approval for the subdivision. Post-purchase physical alteration of land or other activities by Luminati,' and at that time Luminati was the intended purchaser, things changed since that meeting, 'may require endangered species incidental take permit and would be responsible, the responsibility of that company.'" This was a written document, that was an agenda that was printed for this meeting, and recites everything I have represented to this board happened at that meeting. That goes to the second, your, your question about the no further SEQA action. What the people speaking today misunderstand, I believe, of the SEQA process is that where you have multiple involved agencies, as we do here, you have a lead agency, which is the town board in this matter, and then you have other involved agencies that must grant approvals of the permit for the subdivision. We have the planning board, Suffolk County Health Department, New York State DEC, all three must grant subdivision approval here on this application. Under SEQA, involved agencies that are dealing with an application are required to make their own SEQA review, looking at what has been done and studied, and making a determination, in this case, one of consistency or not, no consistency, at what's before you at the moment. So this subdivision application that's before you today, you're looking at as an involved agency, independently of any other one, making your own determination of whether this application is consistent with the GEIS that's been conducted and the findings of, of, that were made by the town board's lead agency, and the conditions that are in there. That same review is going to happen when we go to the health department for their subdivision approval. That same review is going to go, will be undertaken by the DEC. In fact, that meeting where I read the excerpt of the agenda, it was made very clear at that meeting that the DEC was going to accept our current SEQA record, which is the same one you have before you, to handle our eight lot, what became an eight lot subdivision. And that any, because there's no development happening on the open lots, these six, seven, and eight. And the only thing that would happen is SEQA review by the DEC on the endangered species issues, will, and any other issues they may have, will occur when somebody comes into them with an application, which they must, to develop six, seven, and eight. The, and that, that is what it is. That's how SEQA works. It's not, you're not bound by what the lead agency said, and nor is any of the other involved agencies. If you have some rational reason to find something else, you're being asked here only to conduct a consistency study compared to the generic impact statement. So, uh, the gentleman commented that our map doesn't show the salamander restricted areas. That's not true, they're shown on this map. It's an express condition of the contract that we have with the applicant, you'll see the circles with the 1,000-foot radius around every single pond on this map, both on the site and around the site, and that restriction is there's no building within 1,000 feet. That's not changed. And that's the only habitat that's on this property right now, that it can't be moved. The grasslands and woodlands can be replanted and relocated. In fact, the habitat protection plan that was approved by the DEC for the 50-lot subdivision was allowing development in current grassland area habitats along 25, and the town, or whoever was going to then buy it, would have to create comparable acreage, create a new habitat of grassland elsewhere in the property. That was part of the habitat protection plan. So the, these fluid habitats, because a, an endangered bird will go to grassland, whether it's at 25 or in the southwest or southeast corner of the property, the DC recognized that and said, "Just give us the acreage." And that's why you see in the finding statement, these limitations on acreage that have to be preserved for habitat. Not where they have to be, except for the salamander ponds that obviously have to be where they are, but wherever they are, you have to have this kind of acreage for habitat. That's in the SEQA finding statement that's before you, and that is an, an express condition of whenever somebody's going to go develop six, seven, and eight, they're going to have to deal with that, and if they try to change it, they're going to have to go through SEQA review and, and SEQA studies of if they're going to do less habitat or more habitat, more probably wouldn't be a problem. But that's the, the answer to that question. Um, you, did I answer all of your questions?
The 100 acres or more, the transfer-
Oh, that, that, okay, that I addressed at the public hearing on this map. There's no question that this application is a type-one action under SEQA. The, the sale, which is the 100-acre thing, and contrary to some of the comments here it made today, that was a decision made by the town board in that November resolution in 2018. It expressly made a finding that, and it's the same consistency thing that we're asking you to do with our map here, they made the same determination on the sale. They determined that the sale of this property, which could only happen if this map is approved, because this map creates the open land to be sold under that contract, that that, and they expressly say this action is consistent with the SEQA finding statements that we've made previously, and there's a litany of all the words, and I'm not going to quote them here. But that, that decision was done by the planning board, by, I'm sorry, by the town board, when it approved the sale, and approved that cat to be the qualified purchaser of the, the property. So that's not before you, it's been studied already. Now, to the extent it creates a type-one action as a, as a defined action under SEQA, there's no doubt this is a type-one action, I've said it before and I'll say it again because it is. We're under Section 617-10, generic impact statement review, not under any other section of SEQA, and that provision of the code deals with our environmental review circumstance. We have a generic impact statement that was done, finding statements were made, now is an application's coming in under it. The first act that happens under that, and it's either an unlisted action or a type-one action, you don't go through EIS anymore when this new application comes after a GEIS, if it's found to be consistent. Because the first line of review in the 617-10 is, is the action, and action's a critical SEQA word, because that could, that's type-one and unlisted, consistent with the review that's happened. Is it doing something different? We have to go on and do more SEQA. If it's not inconsistent, no further SEQA review occurs, and that's what your resolution says. This is consistent, there is nothing being done developmentally, it's going, as the chairman pointed out earlier in, in the comment, when there is going to be an actual development plan, consistent with the DEC is saying here, that's when a real SEQA review will occur again. And if those plans are consistent with the findings, in terms of acreage and protection of habitat, there won't be any further subdivision, uh, SEQA review then. If it's not, then there will be, because it's all been studied in the generic impact statement. And if it's consistent, if their plans come in and they're preserving, uh, what, I think it was a thousand acres, whatever the acreage, don't hold me to the, the amount, that was required for habitat protection, there won't be SEQA review. But if they come in and say, "We want less," then it'll be SEQA reviewed by everybody looking at it. So I didn't mean to go so long, but, uh, does the board have any other further questions of me?
Thank you.
Thanks.
The, the reference to an agenda item with this, at this meeting that you attended, and I don't doubt that a meeting took place, but I reviewed every single piece of paper in both the subdivision for the 50 lot and what was available for the eight lot. I never saw an agenda, I never saw any piece of paper that says what you may have discussed and the DEC, and I don't doubt perhaps that they didn't-
I'll make it part of the record, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'll make it part of the record, I have the agenda item.
But the agenda item, is there no-
It would not have been in the record, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it would not have been in the record of the 50 lot subdivision, because this agenda in this meeting was on this map.
And I, I foiled the eight lot map as well, as Mr. Murfree could attest. I foiled both of them, there was, there was nothing, and so, again, I, I don't doubt that it appears on an agenda item. I would think, again, something of this importance would have been reduced to, on DEC letterhead and addressed to the, the board or to you via, for this purpose to-
You're entitled to say that, ma'am, but in fact-
How do you not have it?
That was distributed to every member of that meeting, which included the Regional Director of Region One and everybody else at that meeting. I'll be happy to make it part of the record if the board wants to see it. If it's not in your record, because it's not in your record, it's in my records, and, and that's where it is.
Respectfully, I would, I would suggest that it should be part of your record, if that's what you are being asked, you're being given essentially permission to modify what was in the prior record up until that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just make one observation? That meeting also preceded the contract, and so at that time, there were, there was no development plan. But once that contract came into being, there is an intended development plan that is a part of that contract. So those comments preceded the development plan.
That's also not accurate, if you close them.
You could.
I'm an environmental engineer, I have 17 years' experience with, working for the New York State DEC. So I've been here. I think Joe can attest to that, we used to work together. The state law on generic, when, when the final generic EIS has been filed under this part, 617, uh, a supplemental, a supplement to the final generic EIS must be prepared if the subsequent proposed action was not addressed, or was not adequately addressed in the generic EIS, and the subsequent action may have one or more significant adverse environmental impacts. The original FSGIS did not include sale of this property. Sale of 100 acres or more is a type-one action. I don't know how much clearer we can make this.
Okay. Thank you.
Rexfar Calvertin, what we've been hearing over the last 10 minutes goes to the point, you do not have to make a decision on this important issue this afternoon. My understanding is that the town board will be making recommendations to hire outside counsel. Do not underestimate Ms. Barbara or Phil, 17 years in the DEC, 19 years where you guys are sitting now. So please, listen.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We don't underestimate anything that we get from the public, especially people who have, have experience in a specific field. Um, you know, I think we come to a point where, you know, we hear the public comments, obviously they're conflicting with what the applicant's professional has been stating. So in a situation like that, what does the planning board do? Well, the planning board relies on their own counsel, in this case, Mr. Ayers is our counsel, and we have individually vetted our concerns and questions to Mr. Ayers, and he has answered them, them to us. So that's why this was put on the agenda, and it will be taken up for a vote today. So unless there's any other comments on this resolution or any other resolution, we are going to move forward. Thank you.
Make a motion to move Resolution Number 26 of the Riverhead Planning Board adopting the SEQA consistency analysis and SEQA findings with respect to Enterprise Park preliminary subdivision map. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 26. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number two on the agenda.
I'll move Resolution 37, Breezy Hill Group. Riverhead Planning Board to, to assume lead agency on a positive declaration for the SEQA. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 37, Breezy Hill Group, positive declaration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved. Number four on the agenda.
T-Mobile at Riverhead Water District, their resolution granting administrative site plan approval, site plan application proposing, proposing to modify the form of trades, et cetera.
Second to motion?
Motion made and seconded approving Resolution 39, T-Mobile, Riverhead Water District, administrative site plan approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved. Number five on the agenda.
I'll move Resolution 40, Calvertin Pods minus subdivision for a lot subdivision. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 40, Calvertin Pod, Pods minus subdivision, unlisted action. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved. Number six on the agenda.
Move Resolution Number 41 of the RGR Ventures, approving a minus subdivision application. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded approving Resolution 41 for RGR Ventures, approving a minus subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number six on the agenda.
Move Resolution Number 41 of the RGR Ventures, approving a minus subdivision application. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded approving Resolution 41 for RGR Ventures, approving a minus subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move the minutes of the board meeting of May 2, 2019.
Okay, motion made to approve the minutes of May 2. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any public comment on any matter for the planning board? Thank you. Next meeting will be June 6, 7:00 p.m. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Okay, thank you.